I've always had organized.
Oh, you have the paper with them?
Do you want to say yes?
No.
Your role call. Carla Pennington-Cross, you are.
None of us.
You will.
And Craig what?
Yes, Danielle Haley is here. Go ahead and stand for pledge allegiance as you like. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite. Okay. There are motion to approve the agenda. We'll move.
I'll say.
The second, and then is there any discussion? I would like to discuss just proposing that we remove item 6A, election of school board officers to, sorry, to happen before the break, before the recess, after candidate interviews at vote. This our fellow colleague has a time crunch and I'd like us all to participate. Any, does anybody have thoughts on that? Would you accept a family amendment? Would you accept a family amendment?
Yes, I will.
Is there any other discussion? Um, so. Let's see, voice vote, all in favor to approve the agenda with our caveat of moving 6A for the recess. It's a I.
Aye.
Opposed? Yep, consent. All unanimous. And we are going to begin with item two, board member appointment. Thank you, look at this crowd. Good crowd for a school board meeting. Thank you. I want to thank everybody for being here, for expressing your interest, submitting your letters of interest as well. Because there are a number of you, we do have time requirements that we're going to try to adhere to tonight so we can get through the process orderly. So the first thing we're going to do is we'll have each of you, well, we're going to go one at a time, right? So we'll have one candidate come before the board. They'll share a statement in support of your appointment. Following that, we each will ask you one question. We'll be asking the same question of all the candidates. So there'll be four questions and we've allotted about two minutes. Not about, we've allotted two minutes. For your response to that question. I don't believe that there won't be any like back and forth discussion. It's going to be, those are your two minutes to do what you'd like to answer that question. Karen will be kindly timing us and keeping us on track. Candidates who are not interviewing will have a space with Lindsay. She can, she'll be escorting candidates to and from. So we're not going to have you guys watch the other interviews. Once we've done all the first round interviews, you will have an option to return to the boardroom during the vote if you choose to. We will then do our voting, we will tally the candidates. And move on to the second round. The second round will have an additional question from each of us. The same question will be asked of all the second round candidates. And then when that concludes, again, two minutes for that. When that concludes, we'll be voting to determine the final candidate to be appointed to the school board. So thank you again, it's exciting to see all of you. And we can start with the logistics, we are going in alphabetical order. We have some people objected to that. It was the easiest way to do it.
Yeah, that's done.
All right. Here and if I figure out how to follow me.
I shower. So this will not be.
Appreciate it. I did, but it was long time.
Oh.
Yeah. I lost her camera, sorry. Oh, no. Okay. Um. Two minutes for a statement, right? Are you ready Katie?
Sure.
All right, talk to us.
So, um, as my note says, and as you guys know, I frequently attend these meetings anyway. So I feel like I have a historical knowledge of the board and the districts that other candidates might not. So I have that perspective. I also really love this district. I think it's a great district. I want to see it getting even better. I have a lot of respect for the existing board. I like to work with you, not here to fight with you, although sometimes we will. I also have my opinions there. But that's really what it boils down to. I want to work with the district, with this board and make this onboarding process like as seamless as possible because it can be bumpy. And I don't want to, you're like going at a good pace here with a lot of things, but I don't want anything to slow down. And I feel like I could offer that. That said, I saw a lot of good candidates in here, but I'm not going to hold it against you to pick most of them.
We can move on. We can move on to questions and if you want to do questions in alphabetical order, that would put Andy first.
We don't have to, if you want me to, I can. If that's what's going to be. All right.
Oh, we go A through D. Yeah, it seems to go.
I got it. So we're going to. What are your thoughts on diversity, equity, and inclusion in schools?
I think that they are a strength and very important. I'm a member of the equity committee because I really want to make sure that everything is as equitable as it possibly can be. I think our district is an advantage with the diversity that we have, not just racially, but like gender identity, sexual orientation, everything, demographically, like every kind of demographic we are. And an advantage because we have so much and I think our kids come out better for that because they're exposed to everything. That said, it presents challenges as far as figuring out equity and as far as making sure that we're providing the best for all of the students. But I want to help with that challenge, like I feel like I've educated myself outside of here in ways that help with that. I strive to keep doing that and that's, I guess, what I have to say about that.
Thank you. How do students learn best?
I think there's a variety of ways. Some students learn best being taught from the front of the classroom. They're taking notes and they go home and they reinforce that with homework. Some students just need to see it done. Some students do best working in small groups with their peers and I think teachers have to kind of identify how each student learns, which is complicated. But if a student's been in the district for a while, then we have some past data that should help with that. Yeah, and I don't know that testing is always the best mark benchmark for how much they've learned or how they're learning either. It can be a point, but I don't think it's the only thing. Because most students just aren't good at testing. They might know the stuff really well, but they aren't good at testing.
So we're such a nice timer. Oh, that was from her.
Oh.
That was.
No, I restarted it.
Oh, okay. Oh, all right.
I turned my phone down.
I don't mind.
I'm turning it off now.
Sorry.
Okay, no, that's okay. Sorry.
Okay, what's happening?
We are moving, her time is up, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't know. Okay. What are your views on what engagement with staff, families, and students should look like for a school board member? And how would you go about it?
I think it's important to be open, to have them communicate with the board members. I think responses are important, but not always necessary. Sometimes the tightest response is no response. And I think to the best of one's ability, I think it's important to try to be in the schoolhouse and make yourself self-available to the teachers while they're on the clock because they don't need more on their plate after. But that said, when it comes to equity, there are a lot of people that might want to be on this floor who work the same hours the teachers do. So that presents a challenge. So then I think that's kind of my position. So then it would be my responsibility to try to find other ways to reach out to, to the parents, to teachers, to staff, to everybody. I'm not exactly sure what that would look like, but I'm open to suggestions of figuring it out.
On to your last question. Okay, this is, I'm along with it, I'm sorry. So, okay, you've probably heard me talk about this before, but I think the stories that we tell about our districts are really important on this. You know, anyway, so if there are stories that we don't like about our district, we need to work to tell different stories. And so I'm curious and I'll be asking every candidate, like what you think the story of our district is and how as a school board, as a school board member, would you want to add to that story, improve upon it, change it, like? Yeah, does that make sense?
Yeah. Um, I think the story of our district from the outside is not the best, like, and I think it has to do a lot with our demographics because on paper, we're actually better. So I think it's important to counter that and make sure, you know, you tell people the truth when they come at you with something that's not. And it's not always people from outside our district because people within our district believe that same stuff and it bothers me and I have gotten into, you know, like arguments with people about this in the past because if I really love our district, I think our district is great. And if you stack us up against the other North Shore districts, I think we're the best. So, um, and it's fine for them to not believe that, but when there's like actual factual evidence, like post you that says what you're saying is wrong, what you're saying has never been true. What you're saying is based on this, this, then I feel like that's my job to do that. This is a parent, as a board member, of course, I would continue to do that. I feel like maybe then I'd have a little more weight behind my voice as well.
Those are all of our questions. Thanks so much.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Grab my person.
I will go. Thanks, Ryan. Where are they going? I think they were testing.
Oh, the left. Yourself. Probably unquestioned, probably. Yeah, and the light on the question board, she could go over there and then they would be walking past each other.
Like a red one.
Yeah. A red one.
Okay. I told her this one has a little bit of a pace.
I'm sort of aware of that.
Well, sorry. Well. Oh, I have to turn around here.
Hello.
Hello.
I suppose this is nice that I'm not like out there on a catch.
Get a practice, a feel from this side of the table.
We are just going to ask you our questions and Karen will be timing them for two. Oh, statement, statement, sorry. Thank you.
I was like, okay.
I've already lost the.
I'm game, but you've got a few more people. All right, well, I see a lot of failure case, but I'm Kar Karla. I am a longtime resident in the city twice, actually, so we liked it enough that we came back. Our kids did come through these two schools and they access services through 504. So not only am I a parent of kids who have needed alternate methods of education, I'm also a pediatric OT who happens to work at the school, so I'm well versed in what those things are. And I know how key fashion advocacy is. I am passionately advocating at all times for quality public education for our kids. There should be no question of how your address affects your capacity to access strong education. There should be no question about how a difference in your learning or a difference in your communication strategy allows you to access your communication. And there should be no question about how your building and your environment affects your education. There should be ways to figure it out. And there's a lot of out of the box thinking. Occupational therapists do it how they can, right? Like that'd be my bumper sticker. Um, so it's just a matter of trying to be creative. I think that education is something that has had a lot of challenges for a lot of reasons. For a very long time, there have been people taking potshots at public education. There's been, there should be questioning. We should be asking what our public educators are doing, how our public education agencies are spending our money. But I think we need to also be really mindful about what education needs to look like moving forward and understand the history of it so we don't keep making the same mistakes. I've been involved in the community. I do a lot of talking, a lot. My job for the last decade has primarily been evals.
Okay.
I do want to just disclose one thing. I'm super excited with the number of candidates that we have. I will say the timing on this is a little unfortunate because I have something else that's a potential that I know I want to be on a school board. I would want to be able to serve to the best of my capacity and there's some question that this potential, potential, that's really where we're at because I tried to clarify and there's just a potential, potential that might make a difference. So I would just want that to be something that you guys understand as you think about my candidacy because you deserve somebody who's completely engaged and a potential, potential would potentially affect that.
Okay. I'm going to start out with a question. My first question, my one question now is what are your thoughts on diversity, equity, and inclusion in schools?
I think that it's something that we need to have conversations about and we need to understand that it's a really multifaceted piece. So it's not unusual for individuals to have experienced challenges in particular ways. And so their understanding of what those things are are framed by their particular experiences. But it's really a prism. And it's something that we have to continually to have conversations about because there's intersectionality. There's other things that influence each individual's experience for diversity and equity and inclusion. And so it has to be a full and robust conversation. And realize it's, everything's interconnected, right? Like there's just so many pieces. So there's not going to be one answer that works all the time. Except for open mindedness.
Thank you.
How do students learn best?
Well, it depends on the student, right? So I think students learn best when we, first, when we have a relationship with them and we understand and see them for who they are as learners. And then we use their strengths to be able to help frame and shore up their weaknesses. So students, if it were up to me to design public education, it was kind of different. I'm a big fan of universal design and I wish that kids could just have access to services that they need that automatically promotes their capacity to be more independent in their life. That's complicated and it's not really legal yet, but I think there's movements in that direction. Have I answered your question? I'm not sure.
Yeah.
What are your views on what engagement with staff, families, and community should look like for a board member? And how would you go about it if you run the board? What should engagement look like?
I think you have to be open and ready to listen to what people's concerns are. As parents, we're emotional about our kids' action. I mean, school's hard, right? It's hard socially, it's hard emotionally, it can be hard educationally, it can be hard all those ways. I think we need to be able to listen to what staff concerns are and administration and parents, but also be able to peel back and find the root cause. That might be a common contributing factor. I think engagement needs to happen in a variety of ways and it needs to happen in a way that works best for the audience, but also for me. My job isn't necessarily as flexible as some people's and so my access would not be as constant maybe as some other people's are, but afterward, email, virtual meetings, in person. I think being familiar with schools and what's happening in the schools is important. How that works is something that for me would be something in ongoing exploration because it would have to mesh. Right? Did I answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, my question is around, oh, okay. But it's written here somewhere. I believe the stories that we tell about our district are important. And I think if there are stories that we don't like about our district, I think it's important we work to, to tell different stories. So I'm curious what the story of our district is to you and how as a school board member would want to add to, improve upon, or change the story or multiple stories, you know? Does that make sense?
I think so.
Okay.
So the story of our district, I think, is that it has, it's a really diverse district. And in the North Shore, it's the most diverse district. It has the most transience, it has the most economic diversity. And I think sometimes it has the most challenges. And so there's been a lot of ongoing efforts to address those challenges and some of them have really been successful. I think our elementary program, when we experienced it, was something that was welcoming and my experience with the administration was, I mean, it's been a while, but was supportive and responsive. And over time, there were some really nice changes that I've seen. I think middle school is complicated no matter what. And the year that they announced moving fourth grade over to Glen Hills, you would think that the world rocked and broke in half. And middle school's complicated. And so what I'd like to focus on in general is having really positive, good, social, emotional, well-established communities for learning so that people would feel like Maple Tree had this program a few years ago called Bucket Dipper. And all the kids knew what being a bucket dipper was. And it was just a natural part of their conversation. They understood they didn't want to be a bucket dipper, they wanted to be a bucket filler. And they had, that was a natural part of their conversation and you still hear kids that are in high school referencing that. That's the kind of story I want to reference for us. I want us to have something that our kids look back on and have effortlessly wrapped into how they live their lives. Is that it?
Yeah, that does, thank you.
I talked about that.
Yeah, of course, thank you. Do you love both?
Oh.
Okay.
Hi Jenny.
Hi. Hi, everyone.
Hey. Well, you've got a couple of minutes to tell us. What do you want to tell us before we ask your questions?
My name is Jenny. Yeah, I was like, it's kind of silly for me to do kind of the whole spiel because I don't know me, but so, but I did some things anyways and I put some points because I wanted to make sure it was short and so my wife and I have lived in the district for 14 years. We raised our six children through the district's special education and 504 programs. Professionally, I'm a dual licensed educator with a bachelor's in regular education and a master's in special education, where I also received my training as a reading specialist. I've been in education for 17 years, filling roles such as classroom teacher, behavior specialist, and special education teacher. In my professional role at my current school, I serve on our leadership team, our behavior response team, our social emotional learning committee, and when our school had one, I was also on our equity team. I also co-lead our special education team and I participate in our professional learning committees. Right now, we have a book club for professional learning. We're reading comprehensive learning for all. I have a unique lens, I feel, as a person who's taught regular education and special education and a parent, same. I also help facilitate a group for parents in our district who are parents of children with, who have IEPs and 504 plans. Neurodiversity and mental health are things that are really important to me. I feel need to be better understood and educated for all, including educators. It's something that I work with in my district and at all. I also have a passion for community. When my oldest was younger, I served as vice president of the school's PTO. I also volunteer frequently in the community at all and also at my church.
My last. That's a weird word. It's a way to.
Um. As an educator and a mom, I think all students can learn and that's important to me.
Thank you.
Okay. I will start with question. The first question for you was, what are your thoughts on diversity, equity, and inclusion in schools?
Well, I kind of served on that, so. I, I think it's very important. It's definitely very important to me, both as an educator and as a mother. I'm also a member of the equity committee. And I think that it should be a priority in education. I think it should be a driving force in education. And it needs to be something that's clearly defined so that people really understand what it means and then using that to drive decisions forward.
How do students learn best?
Individually. Through access to high quality curriculum that is based on research, science and good educators who are supported. I sent the question, I missed.
Thanks for asking the question, man.
What are your views on what engagement with staff, families and students should look like for a school member, school board member? And how would you go about it?
For a school board member? I guess being available. And also being active in school events. So I'm, I'm already active in the school events, like the schoolyard lineup that we just did. I was there. Letting people know that I'm going to be at said school events and available for things. I guess I really like how you do your like coffee hour thing. So, um, things like that.
Okay. So I think stories, the stories we tell about our district are important. And if there are stories we don't like about our district, then we need to work to tell different stories. So I'm curious what the, what the story of our district is to you and how as a school board member you would want to add to, improve upon or change? Change other stories of our district or change the story that you think that you have of our district even. Does that make sense? I just keep.
Like what's the my personal story of our district?
What do you like? It's like, what is the like when people talk about our district or when you talk about our district, like what is the story you tell people about our district? What do you, or and or what do you think people? If that doesn't mesh with what people think of our district or what the stories for our district to others, like what would you do to? Does that make more sense?
So I speak highly of our districts because I think, I mean, I chose to live in Glen Hill. We moved and we could have lived somewhere else. I chose to live here on purpose. Do I think that our district is perfect? No. But I chose to live here with intent. Because I wanted this place for all six of my children. It was an important place for me to raise my kids. So when I talk about our districts and I talk to other parents, I talk to people about empowering yourself through knowledge, but not in a yep, you know, things are terrible kind of way. Have, have there been some shadows in Glen Hills past? Yeah, but I think that there are lots of great things that happen in our districts. That's why we're here. I mean, quite literally, that's why we moved here. And yeah, I don't know if I really answered your question.
Well, you did.
And your time is up.
I get it. I get it. Thank you.
And get out, Jenny!
Thank you. Just as a drift. Okay, sorry. I was like, everything though.
Hello, Jenny.
Welcome.
Can I do this? Is that okay? First they have to see me on screen. I don't like talking to people's sides.
I know, we don't like.
It's all good. I get it. That's all right. I appreciate that. I forgot about that.
So we'll start with just two minutes for you to tell us. Anything you want to tell us about yourself?
That works. My name is Jeff Howe. I'm a district resident of 20 years. I've been an eighth grader. A freshman in Oakley next year and I've got a current fifth grader, sixth grade. Here at Glen Hills Parkway, all the way up through now. That being said, I'm not going to repeat or try not to repeat anything that ever worked. I think one of the things that I'd just like to highlight about me and I tend to think one of my strongest qualities is to be able to look at things from multiple angles. And have multiple lenses when I try to evaluate something tends to be via my background in lab science, data oriented. But also understanding the caveat that theory and practice are two drastically different things. In a hard science, chemistry, what I teach, data and chemistry are exceptionally well melded. In more of a real world setting that doesn't happen on a lab in a beaker or whatever else it happens to be. How theory presents itself is very different than how those theories are put into practice or if they can even be put into practice. And I think with my background and my strong conviction in the Glen Hill School District being a great school district that I think there's room for improvement. And I think I would bring an asset of being able to see things from both sides. I'm well versed in looking at numbers, data, try to make decisions based upon that, but living both sides of the educational world, actually three sides now as a parent. Get up my own school next year will be a little weird, but nonetheless, I think having that lens gives me a unique opportunity to maybe lend a voice perspective to the board and to the Glen Hill community and school community that might not necessarily be as well heard as other instances. I thought it'd be close to two minutes, so I'll hope that's on that one.
Okay, so my question for you is, what are your thoughts on diversity, equity and inclusion at schools?
I think specifically to our school district, diversity is probably its biggest strength. I like the fact that not everybody looks the same. Not everybody has the same background, whether it's culturally, socioeconomically, racially. And I think it is a great representation of the real world beyond school. I think the biggest thing that schools need to do besides academics is prepare kids to be good citizens in the real world. And I think, I don't know, call like a little microcosm, so to speak. Glen Hills and Parkway and Glen Hill community is a pretty good microcosm, like they're billionaires and they're not billionaires. There are people that do not look the same as everybody where I grew up because I grew up with one minority family in a school of 1,600. You know, that's one of the reasons when my wife and I looked to live, we looked from Shorewood to Grafton. We ended up here. And even before we met, we both owned houses in Glen Hill respectively, before we knew of each other, then we stuck here. Try to answer the other two real quick in two minutes. I think equity is super important in the fact of not everybody has the same assets or the same starting point. And everybody needs to be able to reach the same goal, but different people might need different tools to reach that goal. But I think at the same time, you can still hold students accountable, why being while being equitable. My biggest thing that I want to make sure that doesn't happen is that students don't see where they come from, who they are as a disadvantage. It just, it, they need to be able to see that we're not all the same, but we can all get fixed on.
Thank you. How do students learn best?
I think students learn best, this is going to sound very strange, but by trial and error in their own way. I can speak from my own example, like I've literally had students in my classes I teach, by the way, close to the demo, where they might not getting, get the topic the way that I might be teaching it. I've literally walked next door, Miss X. You explain this different than I do because I know we teach, we teach the same thing, but it's tough different. And all of a sudden it clicks for them. And I think then doing that, students are learning what they need in order for them to be successful. And I think that's probably the biggest thing that we could teach kids is to be able to become self advocates for how they learn. And I'll have kids at nauseam tell me, you know, we're just not getting this, we're just not getting this. Then it's on me in my job or the teachers here in their job. Okay. How else can I explain this? And if kids can learn the tools that they need to be able to learn best in a comfortable, safe, welcoming environment? Given the supports that they need, but at the same time, I'm also a firm believer of when it's time, let's start to loosen the reins on those supports because ultimately I think the ultimate thing is when we get back, we need kids to be able to be productive members of society when they lead us to whatever the next step is, whether it's grade school to here, here, to high school, high school to the workforce, armed forces, for your college, wherever else it happens to be. I think kids learning their own path is how they learn best. And I know that might sound like a generic answer, but I think it's truly a learned process as you go as to what works best for you, realizing that everybody does not learn the same.
My question is, what are your views on what engagement with staff, families and community students should look like for a school board member? How would you go about it?
In terms of the role of the school board member to provide, I'm just asking clarification. In terms of this role, the school board member in directing how the other three entities or in terms of.
Board members engagement with.
Got it. I just wanted to.
Administrator, staff.
I believe the engagement is to be able to listen to everybody and also realize though that staff members, administrators are hired and they were picked to do a job and to also give them latitude and trust in what they do. But at the same time, I'm listening to a parent concern or a student concern or a parent kudo, a student kudo. And bringing it to light where it need be. I don't feel it as a school board members' role to go and evaluate teachers. Term, it's not their job to go and say, well, the teacher, like, that's more of a systemic thing, which in my mind, school board governs superintendent's first, superintendent's then trickle down. I am not a huge fan of micromanaging like I think you need to go and listen to everybody to make the best decisions for all people involved, but then also trust the people that you hired to do their job. If they are not doing their job, then it's a different conversation that need be had. But at the same time, listening to you cannot dismiss a concern. You can go on a fact finding mission to help ease people's concerns. And then if something comes up where whoa, this is a bigger deal. Lots of stuff in the news in the last three days. That's, that's a different story, but at the same time, everybody has their own perspective. And I think taking into consideration almost like the three parts of government and they're trying to make the best decision based upon it, you know? You've got facts, you've got administration, you've got school board, forebears government, and you have parents slash community.
Your timer. That's why I'm sorry.
That's right.
Sorry, I'm not. I heard the timer.
I believe the stories we tell about our district are important. And if there are stories we don't like about our district, we need to work to tell different stories. I'm curious what you think the story of our district is and how as a school board you would want to add to, improve upon or change that story?
Been around a long time, heard a lot of things. Taught at the same place for 23 years, heard Gettle Hills for 23 years. To be honest, straightforward with you, it's a perception that needs to change. And the unfortunate thing is we have our own, like, we have our own graduates of this district making the statement like, I went to Glen Hills, what do you expect? You don't think that happens? It does. This school does so many amazing things. I think we are doing a better job. Kudos to whoever put up Facebook posts today. I have two young ladies got scholarships. Good work. Good work. We need to do more of that to celebrate our successes and overcome the stereotype of what I've been hearing for 23 years, what I've been hearing since Mr. Craig was a student. All right, all that stuff. It's here. It just needs to be touted. Is it perfect? No. Are there things that I think need to be improved? Yes. Is communication? I think the communication is drastically better. Do I think it can be streamlined to make it easier and more accessible? Yes, I do. Do I think that one of the biggest things we need to do is get feet in the building to see what happens? And I kudos to the current board, current administration for providing those opportunities. We just need to go and get beat the drum, get people in the doors now to utilize the opportunities that are given to them. Not saying like I need to hire a PR firm or something like that by any means. If you do, I don't know. You are. But I think it's touting what exists and with data or not, discussing what the negative, ill conceived connotation is. All right.
It was perfect. Who's next? Molly is.
Holly.
Holly. She's out.
Okay, okay. Let's not jinx it, everybody.
So we're waiting for.
Quentin, can you hear us?
I can. Can you all hear? Can you hear me?
We just have to get your sounds going, but it's nice to see you.
Likewise.
I know, probably because I'm muted now. Can you, you try it now? Now we lost. I don't know. He's on my computer too.
He's on all computers except for that one.
Where, and there you are.
You should be, you're involved. Oh, do that, need to start, no, that would be FaceTime. I don't, I don't, I don't know what was different. If we can get the sound, you could, can you stop sharing? There you go.
I had the same thought.
Can you hear?
Yes.
Can you hear us?
Yes. All good.
Do we wanna just call him on my phone and put him on speaker?
Can I just put him on my computer?
Turn the microphone off?
Can we just listen to him out of one of your computers?
That's what I was. What, I'm thinking about calling him and putting him on speaker and putting my phone over there. Will that work?
I mean, Keith was literally like, yeah, it's just gonna come out of those speakers back there.
Let's just try this. I know, I think I have his number in there, nine four.
Oh, we're getting a lot of good eye contact.
No, it is supposed to be through that one.
Is there a password? Well, I think that would, I think the new line though.
Because that computer is hooked up differently, like, that's what's hearing.
So sorry about this, we can only see you nodding and we can't hear you yet.
Okay.
But I don't know what password it's asking for. Can we hear him?
No, no.
Wait, can you say something?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Alright, so what do we have to mute here? Cause we sound awful. We're both muted.
I'm doing on the speaker here, that I muted the.
That's muted too, huh?
Is anybody logged in? We need to turn on that microphone.
That's my computer.
That should be those, that is proper.
He's like, never mind, she's like, I'm good, I'm good.
It could, it could be his headphones that are.
Unmute, mute again, just to make sure.
Alright.
So I'm usually, I'm gonna ask him to speak again.
Can you hear me?
So when he's talking, I'm muted.
So when, when you're asking the question.
Did you hear all that?
I can hear you.
Okay, okay. So why don't you go ahead and just introduce yourself and take your two minutes and then tell us what you want us to know.
Awesome. Well, good afternoon, beautiful people. I appreciate you making a accommodation for me. I'm in Colorado right now attending a summit put on by the Aspen Research Institute. But I'm happy to be here with you all. So my name is Quentin Prince. I work primarily in the education and nonprofit space. I've done that for the last twenty-plus years. I work for an organization called Journey House, which is a nonprofit over on the south side of Milwaukee. My role with that organization is Director of Youth Leadership and Student Success. Essentially, what I do is I oversee all their youth development programs, all their academics, athletics and arts programs. So our STEM, college and career readiness, workforce development, financial literacy and leadership development. I do that for the organization, but then also within Milwaukee Public Schools. So I'm in about twelve high schools in Milwaukee facilitating those programs. I also am Executive Director for the Milwaukee Sports Alliance. The Milwaukee Sports Alliance is a nonprofit organization that was started by the Milwaukee Bucks in twenty eighteen. It is essentially designed to be the governing body of all youth sports across Milwaukee. And so we operate in the capacity of advocating for funding at the state and federal level for youth sports all across Milwaukee. That includes Milwaukee Public Schools. Organizations like the Boys and Girls Club or the Y or private youth sports organizations. So we advocate for funding, we also train all coaches, mentors and any adult who's involved in youth sports. We train them in social, emotional learning, trauma informed care and sports based youth development. We also provide infrastructure development for organizations, so if you've got a sports provider just looking for. To build a new gym or a field or whatnot, we provide support in that. We also see ourselves as the convener for all youth sports. Essentially, making sure that youth sports organizations are collaborating, sharing best practices and coming together to uplift the youth sports sector. In addition to those two things, I'm also a financial advisor. I work for Mass or West Point Financial, which is under the umbrella of Mass Mutual. I got into financial advising in twenty nineteen for a couple of reasons. One, being in education in the nonprofit space for so long, we know that financial education or financial literacy isn't really taught in our schools, unfortunately. And it's definitely not talked about at home, especially in the black and brown community. And so what happens essentially is you have generations of people who grow up without that financial acumen. And we all know that finances are essentially tied to many other aspects of our life. And so an example of that is if a family wishes to send their kid to a particular college. But unfortunately, the barrier to entry is something like financial, you know, that. That can prevent our students from accessing high quality educational programs or colleges or whatnot. Those are the three main hats that I wear. I also teach entrepreneurial data science at UWM.
I, the two minute timer just went off, so I think. We're gonna ask you our questions now, you'll have two minutes to answer.
Sounds good.
First question is, what are your thoughts on the diversity equity and inclusion in schools?
So I think DEI is definitely something that's vital to the fabric of our school culture. I teach a program at New Berlin Eisenhower High School where I use the curriculum from the Southern Poverty Law Center that essentially touches on DEI. And, you know, unfortunately, when we think about DEI in some circles. We think about them independently, but when they all need to be implemented holistically. So you can essentially check a box and say that you are, you are diverse. But how are you treating diverse people when it comes to when they're getting into your spaces? So that includes, that inclusion piece is vital. And so when I talk about DEI, I definitely mention to people that. It's a holistic process that needs to be done. I also feel that DEI initiatives essentially help. Provide opportunities for a community not to sympathize, but to empathize with each other. And so it helps you, you know, you can, you can build community, you can build culture, you can build understanding. When you have the opportunity to interact with diverse communities. And so having those discussions is vital to the fabric of our educational system.
Thank you.
Say it again. I don't think there's a one size fit all for how students learn best. I think we, as educators, we need to see what works for each individual student. Whether that is, you know, new approaches to special education or making sure that we are providing interactive and engaging opportunities for students to. Be involved in the, in the, in the educational process. There is, like I said, there's no one size fits all for students to learn best. But making sure that we have engaged educators that are willing to have a. Differentiated instruction with the students that they serve definitely can help promote student success in our classrooms.
Okay, third question. What are your views on what engagement should look like for a school board member, whether it's with staff, families or students? And how would you go about it?
So I've had the opportunity to serve on a number of boards, whether that's with progressive community health centers or rocket ship schools. Or other nonprofit organizations. And I think the way that board members best engage with. The student staff and the community is to not have a barrier between the people that we essentially serve. As board members, we are the governing body for an educational institution, so we need to make sure that we are speaking to the community. There should be, like I said, no barrier between board members and teachers. Teachers should feel empowered to be able to, you know, voice their concerns or whatnot with board members. Community should be able to do that as well. I think that, you know, again, as us being a governing body of an organization. We need to make sure that the people that we serve have access to us.
I believe the stories we tell about our district are important. And if there are stories we don't like about our district, we need to work to tell different stories. I'm curious what you think the story of our district is and how as a school board you would want to add to, improve upon or change that story.
When it comes to telling great stories about our community, one, there's, there's no. You know, people can go out and they can search for negative stories about the community. There's, there's an abundance of. Negative stories about, you know, Milwaukee as a whole or educational system or the districts that surround the community. We need to be good storytellers when it comes to that, you know, working in education in the nonprofit space, we become good storytellers. We become storytellers, not only telling, you know, the quantitative story about the impact that we're having, but being able to tell a qualitative story. And so in one of the programs that I teach. It's a marketing and branding program. I tell my students that personal branding is the new job security. I say that because I, you know, being a good storyteller and telling the community about your brand essentially can. Add to the longevity of an organization, an individual, whatever the case is. So being able to tell positive stories about the great work that's being done in the district is, is definitely vital. And we need to get to the point where we are, you know, as individuals, we are telling the stories, but then the stories are also being told when we're not in the room. And so, you know, having parents and teachers and whatnot telling those stories as well. My viewpoint on the district is, it's definitely a positive one. I've been in the district since twenty twenty. We recently moved into the district, but I also was educated in the space. So I grew up in Milwaukee, but I was able to attend Dunwood Elementary, then Bayside Middle School and then Nicolay High School. And so I have a little bit of a history on the, you know, experiences of whatnot it is to be educated in the district. And it always has been, for the most part, a positive experience. And so I think continuing to tell that story not only advocates for the schools and the teachers and whatnot and the great work that we do. But then it also allows the community to see the district as a viable. Space to send their kids to.
Thank you so much, that's your time, Sandra. So thank you for your time.
And then Karen will be in contact with you, should you move to the second round to let you all log back in and we'll work on the tech.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, Sam, so we are going, or Samuel, do you have a preference?
Either is fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so you'll have two minutes to just tell us what you want us to know. And then we'll each ask you our question, you'll have two minutes to respond to each of those.
Absolutely. I tried to put a lot of information into that short letter.
Yeah.
But I have four kids, two of which currently go to Parkway, two are younger, they'll be proud Panthers sometime. My oldest will be going to Glen Hills next year, and then I have a current first grader. We chose to move to Glendale for both the neighborhood we're in and also the school district. It's something that we've had our eyes on for a while. I myself am in education, I'm a school psychologist, and so some of the things that I really value is the reputation that teachers had. Especially the special education staff, which turns out that we have a child with complex special needs. But when we're looking around, I really see that as a indicator of the wellness of a school district, so that's one of the things that led us here. So even though I have children in the district and that keeps me invested, one of the things I firmly believe is the best way to ensure their education. Is to worry about the education for all children, and that's one of the driving things I'm interested in. A lot of parents advocate for the kids for where they choose to go to school, and we made that choice. But now I'm at a point saying, I really want to make sure that the Glendale Rivers River Hill School District is good for all students. Cause that is what's best for me and my family in addition to these other kids who are sometimes not the students. Our school system was designed to, to take care of. I think one of the things that's unique about me is the overlap between my professional life as a school psychologist and educator. In educating educators, I teach all classes often for, for future educators, particularly with that special education kind of lens. And I have my own. And I have my own child with needs, but I also have a child whose school has gone very easily for. And so I think this combination is, has allowed me other opportunities when I've worked with schools to be able to see different perspectives. Ultimately, I really think a school board needs to be pragmatic. It's good to have high values, and we have to have those. It has to be pragmatic and really care about all students in the district.
Thank you. Okay, your first question. What are your thoughts on diversity, equity, and inclusion at schools?
Yeah, they're great. In terms of diversity, if you have a good community and a good school community, it fosters diversity, because many different types of families want to be there. Diversity is a real asset, and that's in terms of culture and family background and family makeup and ability. But it also can sometimes be a little bit more of a heavy lift, because you have to consider more than one type of child to educate and one type of family to work with. And so equity, I really believe, is the the movement and the value that all educators and family members need to buy into, because that's how we make diversity an asset for all of us instead of a point of conflict between us. Because we need to say, who needs something and their needs aren't being met? And that is how we look everyone forward. They talk a lot about inclusion too. I think inclusion is super important. I don't know how much time I have.
Thank you.
Oh, I have one more minute. That's not bad. So when we talk about inclusion, I think often we, when inclusion first became a thing, we really focused on the location, and we have kids in the same location. And we really need to catch up to saying, what does it mean to be meaningfully included in your school community? So inclusion, we often talk about special education and kids with different needs, but there are lots of kids who aren't meaningfully included in their school. And so sometimes the way to include someone best in their community is to find the additional opportunities they need that might be in a separate location or in a separate time of the day in order to be a real contributing member of the school. Kids learn best when they're with high-quality teachers who understand the craft of teaching. And our best teachers are the ones in the classrooms most of the time. And so when our special education staff and our service staff and our classroom teachers are working together in shared spaces for all children, that's where we see the best outcomes.
How do students learn best?
So there's lots of variation. Students learn best when they're in a caring environment with high educational standards that apply the best evidence-based practices that we know. And then from there, we say, when kids aren't working, we need to have a data-driven approach to saying, who are we missing? We have to have a multidisciplinary approach for saying, why is that the case? And figure out what do we need to change as adults? Still within that lens of it has to be caring. If kids don't feel supported and safe, they aren't learning. It has to have high standards, because frankly, if you don't have high standards, what's the point of pushing education? But it has to be evidence-based and based on the best things we know. We have learned so much on how to educate as a country that we wanted to make sure that we are doing those best practices. But because kids are so unique, I think those are the rich bits.
Next question. What are your views on what engagement should look like for a school board member, whether it's with staff or families or students? And how would you go about it?
One of the purposes of a school board is to be that link between like school community. And so those are families, but it's also potentially other community members that don't currently have children in the district. And then the school staff. And schools do their own efforts to engage with families and connect there. But as a school board, you have to be able to hear what people are saying. And so one of the best things to do is to show up when there are school events and family events. And so people can connect with you there, because it's hard to reach out to someone you do not recognize. And so even if we haven't chit-chatted at different things, being able to see places and commenting on social media or being public-facing means that I know that if I have a problem, I know who I can reach out to and discuss that with. It'd be nice if I reached out sometimes saying, you're doing a great job. That's not how it works. But I know you are. And then really communicating how families can. Now, because people only reach out with problems, you also have to have good boundaries, not over-promise. Really try to listen and then bring that voice to the team, because it's really easy to hear one voice and say, well, this is the problem we have to fix. But it's only one side of any issue. I have one thing to add.
Okay.
If I still have time on the timer. I also think it's really important that sometimes I think this is more difficult for school boards to see the, like, have the teachers know you and have time to talk with the teachers. Because even though you're that link with the community, you represent the entire school. And teachers understand what's going on in buildings, but they have their own professional roles that sometimes make it difficult for them to say what they see should be changing, because they have their own chain of command. And so having a relationship helps them feel seen, because even though you're talking about them a lot, sometimes they don't know if you know what they are doing.
Thank you. Okay. I believe the stories we tell about our district are important. And if there are stories we don't like about our district, we need to work to tell different stories. I'm curious what you think the story of our district is and how as a school board you would want to add to, improve upon, or change that story.
Telling empowering stories, I think, is a really important part of adult social emotional learning. And I think that is where a lot of that movement has come from. And as a psychologist, everything I talk about is always really academic sounding too, so I think there's a little less. And so, but when I think about the story of our district, it is really first and foremost about educators who are doing transformative work with students. And I think about that with my own kids. So even though they have and will continue to have very different educational paths, they have had educators in this district who have really helped transform their lives, even their young lives. And by extension, those educators have been there to support me as a parent when that's been necessary. And that's also true about the administration in this district. From there too, I think our district has a wealth of experience and diverse experience among our parents. And I am floored all the time when I'm coming to, at this point, Parkway events and being able to meet parents and see how rich their lives are. And that is something that adds to how rich our classrooms are and the rich experiences that our students have, where they are able to learn so much from each other, because there's diversity in thought and experience, even as kids are coming together in the shared classroom.
You don't use it all up if you want. Thank you so much.
No, I appreciate it.
I'm proud of the group of people that I hear with you. So you have a wonderful candidate pool.
Thank you.
Just as a reminder, you have two minutes to tell us what you want to tell us about yourself. And then we'll ask our questions, and you'll have two minutes to respond to each of us.
Okay. Okay. Hi, I'm Chris Robinson. I'm applying for this largely because my daughter had such a good experience. She's a senior. She's getting ready to graduate. And before I knew I had two minutes, I was gonna name off a bunch of teachers that really impacted her. But there were a lot, and I know you were one of them. I want that for all students. And, you know, as I was looking at the materials and the website, you know, when I looked at the equity lens for decision-making, yeah, that aligns really closely with my values. And I feel like the board is really equipped to make good, sound decisions that really serve the diversity of students that we have in this district. And that's critical. And I also feel like we're really preparing students to live in the real world, where they can get along with everyone and work well with everyone. And I'd like to be a part of that. I'm not going to apply for something that I don't think I can donate adequate time to. And with my daughter being ready to move across the country to college, you know, I have more time. And so I'm looking strategically at where can I leverage my experiences so that it makes a difference? You know, educationally, my undergrad and graduate are in areas that studies student development and organizational development. And then later, I went back for an education degree, and it's in cross-category, cross-categorical special education. And professionally, I've worked in a college setting in student affairs for a lot of my career. And now I've been a special education teacher. So I guess I'm looking to leverage my skills and.
Okay, your first question. What are your thoughts on diversity, equity, and inclusion at schools?
I think they're critical. I mean, this district, I think, the strength is the diversity, but it's also the challenge. And you can't have diversity without having an incredible responsibility to make sure that all students are served well. And that's everybody from the students with IP's to the students who are honor students, the students that want to go to college and the students that want to go into the trades. And we have a responsibility to make sure that every student feels included, feels at home, feels like school is a safe haven for them to really flourish. And that's critical. You know, one of the things I liked about the equity lens is that it set out that, I mean, it kind of got at institutional racism and heterosexism. And I think it just gives a really good, a really good lens to make decisions. So I think that it well equips, you know, anyone to make decisions in an equitable manner. I also think it empowers the teachers and administrators, because the board is doing some courageous work in saying, yes, we believe this. We agree with this. This is what our district is going to be about. So when the educators and administrators do programming that is inclusive, and if someone calls to complain, they can, this is a board mandate. We are doing what our school board said to do. And I think that empowers them and makes them, frees them up to do.
I'm sorry.
To do what they're really good at.
All right, thank you. All right, how do students learn best?
Students.
She's resetting your timer.
I think students learn best with a mixture of, an optimal level of challenge and support. So they need to feel like they're in a safe place. They need to know that they have people they connect with, that they have adults they can relate to and who really care about them and love them. And they also need to be challenged. Challenged to make the choices, challenged academically, challenged socially, being able to do things in their free time that really captures their passion and their experiences. And if you have too much challenge, this is my student development coming out of here. If you have too much challenge, you're likely to regress. And if you have too, or, and if you have too much support, that you become complacent. So a combination of the challenge and support.
Next question. What are your views on what engagement should look like for a school? What are your views on what engagement should look like for a school board member, with staff, family, students, et cetera? And how would you go about it?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think it's important to be present at the different public events. It's important for people to not only feel free to reach out to you, but for you to reach out to them. And I would certainly rely on my colleagues to kind of figure out what's appropriate and not appropriate. Like, on one hand, go into a PTO meeting, I would meet a lot of parents. On the other hand, I'm not sure how appropriate that is. I don't want to step on anybody's toes. So I would rely on that, on that advice. But I think it's being present at things. It's sending to maybe doing open forums. I really like surveys and assessments if they're appropriate. But for that kind of thing, you probably want to get together with other people so they're not getting a whole bunch of different things. It's reaching out to the educators. What do they need? What's working well? What's not working well? And again, really relying on the administrators, because I don't want to go around anybody. I want to be, you know, completely transparent and above-board, but also get information so that what I say is grounded in current reality.
Thank you. I believe the stories we tell about our district are important. And if there are stories we don't like about our district, we need to work to tell different stories. I'm curious what you think the story of our district is and how as a school board you would want to add to, improve upon, or change that story.
I think a lot of the story is caring, committed educators, and wonderful diversity. I think the story is family engagement. And I think this district has done a wonderful job setting up kind of short-term volunteer opportunities for hard-working parents to still get involved in the life of the school. I don't know kind of how many people know about, you know, the great diversity and the initiatives to really celebrate that diversity that the district is engaging in. I don't really so much have, I don't have an agenda. I would be an interim person trying to continue on with the objectives. My passion is, one of my passions is reading achievement. And I know that in education circles, there's a lot of talk about the science of reading. And if that is something that the group, that is something that the educators want to talk about, you know, I'm glad to lend my hand to that.
Thank you. Those are our questions for you. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
That wasn't so sincere. I think you're more intimidating than I am, Chris. Hi, Jordan. Hi, Jordan.
Hi.
So we're gonna give you two minutes to tell us what you want us to know about you. And then we're gonna each ask you a question. We have two minutes to respond to that.
Sure.
Karen has a timer. When you hear it, let me just kind of wrap up.
Yeah, yeah. I'm gonna make it brief.
Well, you can use your two minutes.
Sure.
Whatever feels right for you.
Well, this was, this was the seat that I was writing for last year.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think you guys probably remember a lot of it. And I garnered about 25%-ish of the vote, so I think I've got some community buy-in. You know, it wasn't like I got 2%. I got 90%, which I thought was gonna happen.
Maximum is 50%.
Yeah, my math skills. So I think what differentiates me from the other candidates is a substitute teacher, and there's our teachers in there as well. a substitute teacher, I know there's our teachers in there as well. I do teach at the school. And I enjoy that very much. I was at Parkway at Monday. Kids love me. Most of them. And then I'm a small business owner, so for 25 years. So I've gone through all employee relations and for my business, I work with committees regularly, finding compromise budgets and design issues and so on. So I, you know, it's that's my experience with working with groups. My, my business is actually located in the northwest side of Milwaukee when I bought it 25 years ago. We were having a lot of crime issues. And so I initiated a program. I worked with Joe Davis was the older man. I'm now with the Chevy Johnson, he's not the mayor. But we worked together with the community district for community areas on officers of the police farm. And I brought the neighbors together and we brought crime to almost nothing. And it's been that way since we have a strong network. So that's just, you know, my experience with working with teams and groups because I know that's what this job requires.
All right. Question then. What are your thoughts on diversity, equity and inclusion of schools?
Well, part of the reason why we moved to Glendale was the diversity. Strong proponent of it. That's why I think that's one of our strengths. All for it.
How do students learn best?
How do students learn best? You mean in the environment or?
Environment.
Okay.
Instruction.
Well, students learn best when they have a environment that is calm, inclusive, not disruptive. Which is, you know, it's a struggle always. I've known that from subbing as well. Distraction will just sidebar the entire lesson. You have to deal with it and move on. And I think that there's more individualized teaching that can happen. You can give a lesson, but then you'll see some kids just not understanding it. I've had students, I've asked students if they want to help their partner, their friend that's sitting next to them. And they, they're willing to, and I think it helps both, to be honest. You know, this, being a community in a school is the most important thing.
I get the next question. What are your views on what engagement should look like for a school board member with community, staff, family, students? And how would you go about it?
Engagement is definitely important. You know, I toured Nicolay High School with my, my son's now going to be a freshman. And I noticed certain things that they did there. Like they energized in between classes with some music over, you know, over the glove speaker. Creates a distraction, you know, so kids don't start congregating, talking with one another. But it also brings up the mood, you know, I feel like that. I feel strongly that hearing from families is pivotal. Because if we don't know what's going on, if we don't, you know, I, a lot of our neighbors have left the district. And at one point I was reaching out to neighbor by neighbor to say, hey, just what was, what's the feedback? Why, why are you going? What's happening here? Because I wanted them to stay. I wanted them to be part of our community. You know, this, the public schools are the foundation of our community. We let this fail, you know, it's all is lost. So I'm huge on going to continue to talk to people, continue to figure out what could be done better.
My question is I believe the stories we tell about our district are important. And if there are stories we don't like about our district, we need to work to tell different stories. I'm curious what you think the story of our district is and how as a school board you would want to add to, improve upon, or change that story.
Our story is improving. I feel like we had some, I fooled here 11 years ago or so. And it was not a great story. And I heard that a lot. And we, my wife and I came, we talked with the superintendent at the time to figure out what, what's going on. And it's because we wanted to fix it. So our story is strength and perseverance. I think that we, we can set a course to do, you can always do better, right? You can always strive for better, work towards it, set a goal, reach it. You know, that's in life in general, in business in general, you know, that's, that's how you make progress. Figure out the problem, you set a goal. I think that consensus from everybody back there too, we're doing great. And I, you know, this is why I think there's this enthusiasm. You want to get, get on the train when, like you guys did some heavy lifting. You really did, you know what I mean? And so we've got some good momentum and want to continue with it and make it better.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Sure.
Back to the party.
Hello. Come sit next to me.
So we'll give you two minutes to tell us what you want us to know about you. And then we'll ask you our questions in about two minutes to respond to that. Karen has a timer, so when you hear it, just, you know, work on finishing your thought, wrapping up that thought.
Got it. All right. Well, thank you so much for allowing me to interview. My name is Shante Williams. And I think I will be a great asset to the board. I believe that I will bring a balance being that I am a proven, experienced educator where I set high standards for instruction, achievement and character and creating a climate where students are best served in learning, high academic standards, and also creating a safe space for families, staff and community. Also, I've been in education for 24 years. And I've been in all assets of education where I've been a teacher for 10 years, central office administrator for six, two years assistant principal and five years of principal. So I've been in rooms where I understand policies and procedures, governance, also budgeting, and also teaching and learning where we have to have strong curriculum for our students. Another thing is I am a parent. So I have a child that's here, seventh grade. And also my daughter is at Nicolay and she lives here as well. So being a parent and having that family dynamic, you understand what's needed, but also what we can improve on for our students and so, or for our child. So I have a two-fold. I'm a principal and then I have, I'm a parent. So I'm a two Ps, but I understand what needs to be done. So I have to take that hat off as an administrator and put on the parent hat and say, what are you learning? What do you see what's best? I'm an advocate for equitable services for our children and making sure that they feel comfortable and where they're learning, but also coming to a school where they feel like they have ownership as well. So when I look at this building and look at the Parkway as well, I'm like, these are nice buildings. But sometimes we need to just boost up a little bit, you know? So that's where you, you're able to, you know, give some opinion and some ideas about what needs to happen. Another thing is I'm about building relationships. So in my role in community, I have a strong community tie, building relationships. Oh, that's not me. Okay. Okay, well, anyway, I'm committed to making sure that we have the best for our students. So they are on a trajectory for excellence. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, your first question to the board. What are your thoughts on diversity, equity and inclusion?
I think it's needed. When you talk about equity, diversity, inclusion, we can't do anything without that because everyone is different. But you have to allow for people to be who they are and usher them into a way where everyone feels like they're important. So when you talk about equitable services, whether it's curriculum, even hiring people that look like them, that's important too. And inclusion, everyone has a seat at the table. We're not trying to have anyone isolated, whether they sexual oriented or the color of their skin, anything like that. Everyone needs to be included and have a seat at the table, but also offer those different services and the resources in the school so that they can thrive.
How do students learn best?
Um, it's a variety of ways. But again, having the right resources, but also having the teacher for me, being excited about learning and giving them the opportunity to have student choice, to have them be able to work together as a group, having that discourse. You want to be able to have kids feel like they belong to that particular group or class or whatever, to make sure that they understand what's important for them and what does that look like? So teaching with a goal in mind and executing that information out.
My question. What are your views on what engagement should look like for a school board member? Whether it's with community, staff, families or students? And how would you go about it?
So being open. Everyone likes to talk. Some people just want to have someone listen to them. So when you're listening, make sure you, you taking, being sincere, being genuine in your approach. And if it's something that you don't know, say I can get back to you or there's something I want to the board or what have you. Because I know as the board, we work with the superintendent. We have to make sure that things are kind of aligned so that parents and community members feel like we're working on their cap. And again, having that conversation, making sure that we're able to work together. Community will, they will lean towards favorable towards you where you're able to listen and to talk advances and execution. And that's the thing, we understand expectations. But again, the execution is what gets people to have that true buy-in. And that's for the school board and for all of us across the board when we deal with children. Because again, they're our precious cargo. We want to make sure that we're talking families and we're building relationships with them and having that listener ear. Regardless of what it is, it may seem absurd to us, but again, to them, it's important.
Thank you. Thank you. I believe the stories we tell about our districts are important. And if there are stories we don't like about our district, we need to work to tell different stories. I'm curious what you think the story of our district is and how as a school board you would want to add to, improve upon, or change that story.
So I think the story of our district is diversity, also to high achievement. And I say that with high achievement because I believe that the teachers here and administration here, they work together. It's not something that's a separate entity. It's like we're working together for the greater good and the greater good is the children of this particular district, that is where they're held. We want to make sure that the students see us as a unit. And it's not us against them, them versus us. It's we're moving together to see a greater good of high achievement or working together in any facet. Because again, if we hear the negative comments on the outside, that changes the way we do business inside. So we have to make sure when we're out and about, we're still saying we have the best school or district in the state of Wisconsin. I don't care what it is because I always think private problem solving, public acknowledgement. Like we're going to acknowledge that we're doing great things, but whatever we have to solve privately, that's what we'll deal with. So we can change the outlook of whatever is happening outside of our district. So again, public praise, private problems.
Thank you. Those are our questions for you. So thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Every one of you brings something to the table and it's not a very wide distribution. We are, I think, in the way that I look at everything, micromanaging and really trying to slice the dice because people are so close. And it's a very hard thing to do in this kind of forum to judge someone's work in a very small period of time. So I really do want to, Carlos had encouraged each and every one of you to stay involved. It's not empty words. It's really very heartfelt and very meaningful. And we appreciate everything that you guys did by coming here and being part of the process.
I wanted, no, go ahead, please. I was just going to say, as far as the ranking, I, for me, tail needed. It was kind of nice because every single one of you, like, had people that were rooting for you. So nice to see that, you know, it's just different, you know, different styles, different things, different connections. So I just wanted to say it was kind of cool for them to see that. I was like, wow, like everybody had somebody rooting for them. So it was kind of neat.
Do you want to, let's move it forward?
Sure. So this is not in any order or anything like that. But we would love to invite back to the second round, Karen, Jeff, Christine. Say it right, Shante.
And the rest of you are free to stay if you want. But the people who are about to get the second round of interviews, the ones who aren't being interviewed have to.
So if we stick with Alphatac Board, we would choose Karen first.
Same seat.
Sure. Same seat.
Oh, actually.
Just so we can have a time.
Yeah, it's two, four questions for two minutes. Hello.
Hi.
Okay.
Are we going to stick to Alphatac?
Okay. Do you have any specific criticism of the school or board district?
Well, you know, if somebody else was sitting in the chair of my day. I don't know that I have anything specific. I think the only thing I could say, and I've said this about all of the North Shore districts at one time or another, is in a two-school district, we should be shining. Right? Like we should be able to, to really shine as educators. And it's complicated, but I wish that people saw us shine more. And, and I'm always wondering what the tarnishes, right? Like what's the barrier to the shine? But I don't know, that's not a specific. I'm very glad you came back to whole committee as opposed to the, like, that would have been my question sometimes if you guys are still doing all of the whole committees.
Thank you. In what ways, I'm sorry, in what ways can a school board partner with school leaders to improve student academic outcomes?
So first and foremost is you really have to get down to the root cause analysis to what the barrier is. And to do that, you need to trust your educators. And you also have to have a really, a two-way trust relationship to be able to know, so that educators know that they can trust you with the board, right? I think empowering teachers, listening to what their concerns are, what their barriers are, but also listening to parents and understanding what other barriers might be. And I'm sure that there's multiple facets to how a school board's function that I just don't know right now that are probably also pieces to that puzzle. That would be my thought at the moment. That would be my thought at the moment.
What role do you believe public schools should play in supporting the social emotional growth and mental health of their students? And how do you think our district is doing?
So this is an ongoing conversation and affected until recently, it was a really large part of my role in my own district. We do not provide mental health care, right? The public school system doesn't provide mental health care. You can contract with people who come in to provide that, but the district itself is not the licensed provider. That being said, our students are in crisis and we need to be identifying those needs and facilitating access. So having those supports in the schools, I think is really key. The other thing we need to do is be developing healthy, social emotional communities from the get-go. Our, our four-year-olds should be, I'm not a fan of academics K-4. I mean, that's, you know, that's what we're challenged to do. But our K-4s need to be learning how to socially navigate and socially problem solve. And that needs to be done floating up. So I think if we can have healthier, social emotional relationships starting out and constantly building community while also addressing these ancillary needs of students who have really unique mental health needs. By having community partnerships or supporting families and accessing other supports, then we'll be in a better position. Yep. Okay. If appointed, you'd be one of five people who need to make decisions as a unit. If you find yourself in the minority opinion, how would you handle that? How would you engage others to get them on board? How much work through disagreement with another board member or administrator? Feel free to give examples of how you handle similar situations. There's a lot of questions. You don't have to answer each one, but you know. Sure. I mean, so how do you, you know, how do you solve dissent or, you know, how do you engage in discourse? So I'm a word person. I don't have an issue with using words. And I generally don't have an issue with being able to respond relatively quickly in a conversation with things. But I've learned that you have to give space to people and it's better to think through things at times. Almost all of my job revolves around coming into a, a discussion around a concern. And then sorting through how we arrive at a determination that is appropriate and then creating a plan, right? And at times we don't all agree. We shouldn't all agree, right? I would be much more concerned with an organization where everybody was in lockstep all the time. Because that's when really bad things happen that we don't notice. And the district, I think, is still recovering from that. There was some accidental lack of understanding of some things that have needed to be corrected, right? So you engage in discourse, you try to take other people's perspectives, you ask questions, you try to, I do a lot of, can you frame that for me in a different way so I understand it better? And, you know, sometimes I try to go figure out what else I need to know to be able to better inform myself so that my opinion is better supported or maybe it's wrong and that's okay. I can just change my thoughts. Did that answer everything?
Yes, thank you.
Perfectly timed. Thank you so much.
Oh my God.
It went so fast, didn't it?
I know.
Yeah.
Also, I'm amazed that I made it.
So.
Okay. So I'm going to throw around to you some specific criticism of the school board or district.
I don't like the word criticism. I would say areas of improvement may be more applicable. Sorry. Um, if I would say in my viewing of, I'm not getting sort of limited to school board meetings, I think I've seen a few or enough. I would say at times I think they got a little, maybe what I would consider proper etiquette for a school board meeting. At times I understand things get heated, but at some times I'm like, I think how people treat each other is a very important thing that needs to be taken into consideration. I don't agree with everything everybody else thinks, but I think there's definitely a handle back that maybe sometimes, myself included, things always get the best of us. And of the board, I think, was it just the board?
The board and the district and also how would you address it?
Okay. And any other criticism is, I don't know if this is a criticism or maybe like, I think at times the board approved hires for a reason. I think sometimes we need to give the autonomy to those hires and let them do their job. And if there didn't prove results, then I think that it's time for maybe the board to step in a little bit more. I don't want to use the word, and I'm going to put a word out that's probably a bad word, but I think it's almost a little bit too much micromanaging at times. The district itself, I think, I kind of addressed a little bit before, but more so in like celebrating successes. And I think I would like to see the district do more internal comparison. And are we, are we better than we were yesterday? Are we better than we were a year ago? Are we better than we were five years ago? If we are, those are great things. I was like the kids at this school, we're all in different places and comparing ourselves to different districts. I don't know if we're there or is it important?
Thank you. In what ways can a school board partner with school leaders to improve student academic outcomes?
Um, I think school board can partner with school leaders by trusting school leaders. By giving the opportunities and resources within a fiscally responsible manner to provide kids opportunities or provide their staff opportunities, which then trickles out back to the students. I think they can also support school leaders by, we all like to hear when we're doing a good job. But I think oftentimes too many people are quick to criticize, but not quick to compliment. And I think that is one way. To be honest with you, if you like where you work, you're going to do a better job working there. And I'm not saying the board does not do that. That is not my point, but I'm, that's how they can support. I think that's a way to support. That's not a criticism from question launch by any, I'm not privy to that. But I think those are definite things where, you know, if I am a teacher, but if I were a staff member here, like, hey, I've heard you did this in your sixth grade science class. I thought that was really cool. But like, you know, a top-down message from someone above you goes a long way, even if it's a little like, took you five minutes to write a handwritten note, but you do it twice a month to. I have 26 minutes. Wow, I could sit for a long time.
No, 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 no.
It's all good. It happens. Trust me. I teach. I think that's how, that's pretty much, I think, how I would, you know, entrust people to do their job, create a positive learning environment, create a positive work environment. Give opportunities while fiscally being responsible to do so. It's not just an open chat book. I understand that.
All right. Where, is it me now? Yes, yeah. Okay. What role do you believe public schools should play in supporting the social emotional growth and mental health of their students? And how do you think our district is doing?
Maybe very straightforward. I think it's exceptionally important. But I don't think it can be done at the cost of other areas of school. I think it has to be melded together. In terms of, I'm a firm believer by master's advisor. Went out with them one time after I finished a little paper and all that sort of stuff. I'm like, why did you throw this stuff down her throat? So you do it some of the time and do it good. I'm not saying that's the same with social emotional learning. I think it's exceptionally important, but I don't think we could put all of our eggs in one basket. Because while a student and a staff member and adult needs to have a social emotional foundation, at the same time, we need to make sure we're teaching the skills and knowledge and executive functioning skills that people need to become. Adequate, not inadequate competence, a productive member of whatever the next thing in their life happens to be. So exceptionally important. But there has to be a checks and balances system where we don't tip one way or the other. One of my honest answers is just from what I see.
Okay. If appointed, you'll be one of five people who need to make decisions as a unit. If you find yourself in the minority opinion, how would you handle that? How would you engage others to get them on board? How would you work through disagreement with another board member or administrator? And feel free to give examples of how you handled similar situations in the past. Caveat, that's a lot of questions, not one. But if you get at the root, you know, feel free to address what speaks to you.
I'm not a, you're never going to agree with everybody. I think one of the things I do relatively well is see things from other people's side and try to incorporate that into my decision-making or things that I think are important and should be advocated for. That being said, there are also, also multiple ways to achieve the same common goal. I work in a PLC with five other chemistry teachers. I know what our outcome is, but I like this lab. It does really well for me. I have another teacher who literally vehemently hates the lab that I do. She doesn't do it. We give a common assessment and both of our kids do well. So in terms of realizing it doesn't all have to be done the same way, while that may be not be directly applicable to a school board because we're setting policies and dictating things like that. I think realizing that being open to other people's ways to do things can still get you the same goal. But it doesn't necessarily have to be, it's not the same, as long as we end up at the same destination, the route we took maybe a different. I think truly everybody probably, not probably, I would hope everybody has it being a kid-centric decision. Realizing that there are also fiscal responsibilities and your responsibilities and adult stuff that has to be taken care of with putting the kid first.
Those are questions. Thanks, Joe. Hi, Chris.
Hello.
We're gonna ask you our questions.
Okay.
All right. Do you have any specific criticism of school board or district? And if so, as a member of the board, how would you address those concerns?
I don't. I mean, it's been a while since I've been at a board meeting. You know, once my daughter graduated, I, I didn't attend. But I remember really thoughtful conversations and I remember a lot of civilities. And I, you know, I've looked at past, you know, agendas and minutes and things like that. And I don't, I, I feel like you're dealing with pressing issues that you're listening to each other. You're listening to the people that you've served. So no, honestly, I don't.
Thank you. Okay. In what ways can a school board partner with school leaders to improve student academic outcomes?
I think part of it is maybe beginning looking at some assessment data and, you know, asking what the administrators, you know, key goals are, what the priorities are, and then really seeing what the administrator needs to advance those. And also, you know, together looking at that assessment data and what parts are most troubling? Where do we think we can move the needle and what will that take? You know, is it fundraising? Is it bringing in more community support? Is it having the, the difficult conversation? And really figuring out, I think as a team, what it takes to advance to the, to the next level. And also I guess what additional data do we need and are there any experts that, you know, that, that we have that we can bring in to get more information? I think it's really important to get information from the people that decisions are.
What role do you believe public schools should play in supporting the social emotional growth and mental health of their students? And how do you think we're doing in our district?
I think that's really critical. And I think it's become more critical after COVID. People need to feel safe and supported. And students are dealing with so much and I, I can't remember the numbers, but I just saw some really alarming statistics the other day. About, well, this was about young women, about how prevalent depression was and anxiety was. And it's not decreasing, it's just increasing. And maybe parents are in a position to handle it on their own, but maybe they're not. And so to be able to make sure that we're, we're well-resourced to provide services at the schools, but also that we're communicating with the parents about things that they can do at home. And I think it's also providing it, providing healthy supports, whether or not they're asked for, right? So making sure that educators have the resources they need to say, if they want to do mindfulness. Making sure that people have the information if they want some extra training and things like that. You know, Carl, I know you were instrumental in putting together some training that, that was really helpful. And I think those things are probably ongoing initiatives, but I'm, but I'm not sure.
If appointed, you'll be one of five people who needs to make decisions as a unit. If you find yourself in the minority opinion, how would you handle that? How would you engage others to get them on board? How would you work through disagreement with another board member or administrator? Feel free to give examples of how you handle situations. That, I know, my, my question was two minutes old, wasn't it? That is a lot of questions in one, but if, if this, anything speaks to you, if you want to get at the root of sort of what those questions are, you know, obviously you don't have to answer all, but.
Sure. You know, I've actually been thinking about this a little bit and, um, first of all, I think once a board decision is made, it's important to be absolutely behind it, whether or not it was a position that I held. Because it was discussed, we talked about it and we ultimately made our best decision with the information that we had available, whether that was my position or not. Um, in terms of if something is up for discussion, I think it's, it's about having respect and having conversations and asking questions and really listening that I try to keep an open mind and I'm not always right. And other people are often smarter than I am and just really listening and remember to, to ask the questions because that's a good way to get information and know that everyone is speaking their truth. And really assuming good intent in all cases. Everyone is making absolutely the best arguments that they can. And nobody is doing this if they're not passionate about providing a great environment and education for kids.
Thank you. Those are our questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Four. It's Shantay, right? Welcome back. Just eight more minutes. Just eight more minutes.
Eight, four more questions. Thanks for your patience.
So you have any specific criticism of school board or district? And if so, what would you do as a member of the board to address those concerns?
So having criticism. Oh, well, um, only thing is I think with our district or the district, just making sure we have curriculum that aligns with students and our population, making sure we have resources or books or even if it's classroom books to have representation of what's really happening in the world. Sometimes when students or kids, I'm gonna say my son in particular, he'll go, you know, in some of my classes, I don't get a chance to get books that I can say that the representation is there. So it's important for us to have that gold with the extra resources, use the budget money to say, okay, this is your classroom library. You may not have it in the particular library, but you can have a classroom library or something that you can choose from and you can check in and check out. And then, you know, be a part of what that looks like. For that person who you are, you can shine through maybe a book or maybe some quotes or maybe whatever, something that will allow him to express himself and also to see himself represented in those pages.
Thank you. In what ways can a school board partner with school leaders to improve student academic outcomes?
Having open conversations and really be intentional on what the problem is and having some type of solution at the end. Or at least don't table a situation, just go, okay, if we, if we do table it, we're going to come back to it the next time. Because again, it's just not written words or this or that. It's a working document that we need to make sure that we address. So I think opening conversation, open conversations, but also making sure that everyone has an opinion or can give some type of right, give some type of opinion, but also to be intentional on what is being said, but also leading with the way that we're going to come back with a solution.
What role do you believe public schools should play in supporting the social emotional growth and mental health of their students? And how do you think our district is doing?
With socially emotional, being coming out of COVID, we're moving forward. A lot of students are having a hard time coping, whether it's in the school or just trying to with friends or having a dialogue with one another. I think socially emotional in the classroom, providing a time where during the morning, maybe morning meetings or something like that, where they're talking about different, um, different topics related around. It could be something they may have seen in the news or a topic where they get from a curriculum. So talking about either being kind, setting expectations. You know, being committed to a process, whatever it is, something where they can express themselves during that time. And I always say morning meetings because this is time where they're together and they just get there in the morning or have that conversation and they're open to what is happening for the day. And sometimes they don't get a chance to talk to other people outside of their home. So when they come to school, this is their outlet. So we want to make sure we have either lessons in place, a curriculum in place or a daily question where they are dealing with maybe some type of emotion or able to write or speak what they're feeling and have a, you know, a dialogue of what's happening with them or somebody they may know. And that could just be the outlet, outlet to be almost like a freedom type of atmosphere, like I got it out. But sometimes we bottle things up and being a kid, I know as an adult, sometimes I don't want to talk to people. So having that type of curriculum or having that outlet provides change. And that's what we want them to have changed, but also the autonomy to feel like they belong to either a group or being able to express themselves a little bit more.
If appointed, you'll be one of five people who need to make decisions as a unit. If you find yourself in the minority opinion, how would you handle that? How might you engage others to get them on board? How would you work through disagreement with another board member or administrator? Feel free to give examples of how you've handled similar situations in the past. I know that's a lot of questions. If you could, if something speaks to you, you want to speak to, we're trying to get at the root of. Sort of how do you communicate? How do you resolve conflict?
So I'm a big communicator. When some things are not going to go your way, right? So is, I'm always asking like clarify that or how, how is this going to help our school? Or how is this going to, you know, allow for us to move forward? My whole thing is moving forward. Now, if there's anything as a roadblock, how can we either tackle that roadblock or, or route? So I ask those questions like, hey, give me, give me a little bit more. I need to just hear a little bit more. My opinion may change, it may not, but I need for you to give me a little bit more. And if I see interest where I go, well, I can see your point. I may not agree totally, but I can see the benefit of the greater good. And that's the whole thing. It's not about me. It's the greater good and what we want to see as we move forward. So again, having a dialogue, asking questions, but also don't just shut it off too quickly. Because again, it may be something someone said or getting a clear opinion of what, which you mean by that. So I can make an informed and sound decision.
Thank you. Those are questions. Thank you so much. Six more hours of board meeting to go. That's us, yes.
What's next?
Now, you select your top choice.
I can't think too long. I just, it's impossible. Do it, Danielle. Unleash the arrow. Let it rip.
Okay, so if it's two, three, it has to be three. All right, so we gotta rank them. Okay, okay. All right, back to the drawing board, one through four. Can we just use our?
What, what are we doing?
And then we drop the low, we drop the highest score.
And then you, out of three, you do your top choice. Again, to see if you get it.
Oh, yes, thank you. Okay. It's just going fast. I feel like I'm a thing. Oh, he used his notes page.
That would have used up a lot of excess space.
My notes.
And that would have gone against you. Because you have already planned this out. Instead, now we don't have any ballots left.
We're not going to take a break. We're going to move on to office for lectures once we have this.
Oh, right.
We also have 10 minutes ahead of schedule, Andy.
I got a daughter who can be very upset if I'm late.
I have a six-year-old daughter. It's birthday, I'm just saying. And I'm not a terrible parent, so I won't party on Saturday, but this is important. Tell your daughter you were there on time and if you're there at 7:05.
I'll tell the whole Nick Lake school.
She probably won't.
Hours as a board member.
Yeah. She won't check this. She won't know if you left. So just know you were there at the end with flowers.
It's true. I agree.
I had to have flowers, Instacart, and something with a hip hop recital last week because I left the flowers at home. And I was like, I will not do this again because I didn't get flowers for her last time.
My son is seeing pirate booty for dinner tonight.
My kids do that when I'm home, Carla.
Yeah, Nick does that when I'm home too, but I add to it when I'm home.
I mean, I might put other things on the plate, but.
So we're going to find out that one person is dropped, right?
And then we go back to top candidate.
Of the remaining.
So my top choice.
Remember to sign them.
My signature looks like the principal.
Number one is the top candidate, the one I want, right?
Yes, yeah, I know, you have to reverse. This was just supposed to be a top. Just one. Oh, one person, guys.
Can you?
So just one out of the three. Thank you. You have three votes for one person. Okay, that's all right, that's all right. Rank your top three. Don't forget to sign them.
Top two.
No, we have to rank them. I'll start with.
I feel like if we're doing the same thing.
Me too.
Well, that's how it should be. We know it would be redundant at some level, right?
Ranking three.
Chris, Karen. You're right. I'm just writing the same thing.
Just heard that I ripped something up. They're going to be complaining.
I have to take back some of my notes. They're mine. I'm only, you are the recipient of my largess, sharing that.
We have to keep going with this.
How do you default to your other policy motion?
If we can't achieve a majority today, then we revert to that other policy.
Well, we can still, you can still, yeah, that's true, I guess. We will not do this.
So the next ballot, we're just writing down our.
We will have.
Yeah, she's six. Oh, that's cold. I should have ordered tuna. I ordered, I thought we were eating at, I don't know what I was thinking. I was like, I can't eat tuna.
We ate tuna last time together.
See, I'm protected. I should have ordered, I got hot peppers, onions, but I should have gotten extra onions, extra peppers. You should have eaten first. That way.
That's what I was.
Really motivated to finish this up.
I didn't want candidates to smell fish on me.
They need to get to know our true selves. I am a tuna salad person. Because I would do veggie sauce, but they're usually like, just not, they're not well done.
I like homemade tuna salad. I like to make it myself, but I don't like mayo tuna salad.
So vote for your top candidate.
What do we do now? Do we have a discussion?
Yeah, you said that you can move to a discussion.
Well, I had leave and so then you guys figured it out. Then why?
You said you're committed to this process. Okay, is there a motion to open some discussions? Okay.
It's awkward.
Is there a second? Does anybody want to discuss?
Okay, I, you know.
No, please. Oh, wait, oh, you're right, right, because we're voting to just, I'm sorry, all in favor of having a discussion.
Great. I just want to say that what we ought to be doing is judging by certain criteria. Involvement in school districts, knowledge of importance to of education, right, to, and, and our community goals. You know, community involvement in general, specificity of the answers. So I, and I, I think that, you know, there's one candidate who has, you know, checked all those marks across the board and I mean, I'll say it publicly, I mean, it's Karen Conlon. I think that we ought to support her. She's been involved, she's had kids in the district. She is, she, she's involved, she pays attention, she shows up. She has an educational background, works in schools. I, I don't know why I wouldn't support her unequipped.
Well, I mean, Chris checks all those boxes too. That's the thing. Right, she has showed up, she has participated, she's a teacher. She's passionate about education. She's had kids, kids come through our district. It's really hard. Karen has mentioned, you know, the possible obligation of creative. That's like, that's sitting in my mind, but honestly, with these two candidates, I can't. I, you know.
I don't think I have anything publicly I want to say right now. Give me a second.
I'm not sure what we're.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Like, I think we possibly see if anybody's amenable to changing their vote, right? What else could we do? We could talk, well.
I mean, I'll be honest, I would be happy with either Karen or Chris on the school board. I think both.
Then we maybe need to weigh what it looks like to not come to an agreement as a board. And having an open spot for however long and starting the process all over again. As, as, that's one thing to think about. I agree that both are amazing. I do, I did find myself gravitating towards Karen's answers more. Specificity or sort of seems like more current involvement with the district and knowledge her comfort level with speaking. I really, I just, I appreciated her candor and directness. I think Chris is also direct and has a great wealth of experience. But I was just finding myself feeling aligned with, not necessarily like that we would think the same, but just think that she, that there would be, I don't know, I was, I was excited to kind of. Aligned with, not necessarily like that we would think the same, but just think that she, that there would be, I don't know, I was, I was excited to kind of learn more about. How. I don't know, I, again, all are great and there are.
Ms. Robinson seemed very, very nice, I know clearly with her, I don't think, yes, her say. I do wanna point out though that she has not been to a meeting and she not have any particular comments, on the other hand, she indicated that she wouldn't run for longevity in spring.
No, she would.
She said she. In her letter, she said that she wouldn't run again if that mattered.
Oh, oh, oh.
And I think that we want someone who's going to be around for longevity. Frankly, as former president and someone who's been, you know, not necessarily corporately vocal in board making either, which would say, you know, we all do our best. I don't mind shape being thrown my way, as you all know, I can take criticism, and I think that there's a lot of fairness in asking for criticism, because if you're gonna be on board, there's gotta be something. That you think is better, and, you know, I feel like Karen has a lot of sense of what worked, what doesn't work, just from being in this environment. And I don't feel that Ms. Robinson has that direct connection with. That's all I'm saying, I appreciate it.
Okay.
So I should. Ben might have.
Oh, yeah.
I would propose you have another vote.
Yeah, that's right. I think that's a good idea, so Ben.
Well, yeah, I mean, kinda like we were saying, I mean, with, starting with nine, it's difficult to differentiate between the two, but, you know, coming down from nine to four to two, it's. My, anyway, yeah. And so like, I, I understand. You know. The difficulty here, and, you know, they're, they're very close. I do like Chris's background in education. I think that is essential on a board, is to have that component. You know, if you talk about assessment data, you know, if you talk about figuring out, hey, where are those top priorities? And then tackling those priorities, and I mean, that's exactly what you have to do. And so that's kinda why I'm leaning that way. I mean. Could I be convinced, like, could I be convinced with all their questions? I mean, is that, is that possible? I mean, are we allowed to do that, where we can bring them in again and ask them more questions to kinda get a better feel, cause I mean, it's not like we're, yeah, this is a. Choice between two good people, so, you know, that, that's kinda where the difficulty comes, so it's, so anyway, that, those are my thoughts, it's. I thought Chris's answers about how a school board can help move the district forward academically or better. That's one aspect, obviously. But. A solution to this problem we're having right now, I mean, is it possible to bring them in and? Maybe one or two more questions.
Probably not tonight because of Andy's timeframe.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
In terms of postponing, if we need, if you are questioning, or if that's, I would propose that right now, we just do one more vote. And then we see where we're at, and then if we have to have additional discussion about how to proceed, we'll do that. Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
Okay, here we go, and we are doing.
One candidate.
Write an A down. Well, you can write a B, that is. Such a high caliber candidate. Blessing and a curse.
It's only a blessing.
It's only a blessing.
They're all classy, they know.
All of it inside.
Ben is jerking his spine.
Does anyone candidate have three votes, Allison?
Yes.
And who is? Okay, we have our next school board member through appointment, is Karen Conwell, but could we, if they're both willing, could we bring them in just to?
Someone looks a little proud.
Ten years, wow.
Wow.
Nothing but cakes, wait.
Why does he get that? Oh, oh, oh.
We get cake to do?
I have no idea.
No, these are delicious, they're nothing but cake, cause I think they're just.
Okay, fine, I'll take it.
Leftovers. Lemon and red velvet, well, you have to go, sweet.
Yeah, let's get her.
Could be a creative from facilities, they said they had every treat, so.
What?
The facilities team, free treats, so I wonder if that's.
All right.
Andy, can you stay ten more minutes? Stay ten more minutes, then we'll be able to congratulate and greet them and have our vote on officers, so you can do this, we'll go first.
Please, Andy, please.
I understand, let's just come on.
Okay, all right, here we go, all right. What? Oh. Yes, that's what we're trying to get, oh, yes.
Not me, unless you want me to say again what I said before.
No, we just wanna reiterate our gratitude as this high caliber of candidates, and it was not an easy decision for anybody. You guys made it very difficult, and again, we encourage everybody to consider the open spots when they come.
It's really easy to put your name in, you just come in, fill out a form, and you'll be on the ballot.
As the meeting, you recorded?
Oh, it's muted, oh, I thought.
So after many rounds of voting, Karen Conwell will be our interim board member. Yeah. So we look forward to working with you, and we look forward to seeing all of you put your names on that ballot, please. That would be just, again, a really, that would be really awesome for us.
It's, it's like, like Danielle was saying, blessing, curse, that there's so many excellent people here, and it just.
You actually just said at the group right before you guys came, that it makes us more comfortable, whoever. Whoever got appointed, really, clearly, it was a good group of people that you choose from.
So thank you.
Thank you so much. So we'll follow up with onboarding stuff and, and talk about through review, we'll follow up on that, and just thank you again so much.
Thank you.
Please stay involved, be engaged, we'd love to have you guys. Okay, but we are going to quickly move on to our election of school board officers before we break. I'm just gonna lay it out, we are going to do it position by position. We will take nominations for each. Does it say that somewhere?
Yeah, let me find, the beginning one is like, in our policy first, because it's present, and then after the.
Oh, you start, you're right, because I'm no longer interim, is that right? We are, we are officerless.
Oh, we are unmoored.
We're unmoored, okay.
All right, so it says, the first order of business will be a vote on whether there will be a nomination process for president, or a motion to accept the single slate of officers.
Okay, is there a, is there a motion, does anyone want to put out a motion?
I'll move that we nominate.
We're just president, we're just president, I'll second, all in favor of voice vote? I'm sorry, was there any discussion? Okay, there's consensus, I apologize.
And then it says the vote for president will either be secret or an open vote, and this is again determined by a motion.
I would motion that we voted open.
Second.
Unanimous consent, no one objects?
No.
All right, then we'll move forward with an open vote for president? Oh my God, I'm sorry, you're supposed to be doing that.
No, you're good, you want to do the votes, I think. We're figuring this out, it says if more than one board member is nominated for president, each candidate will have three minutes to vote, so I guess we start with nomination, okay?
Okay, I nominate Danielle Haley to serve as our school board president coming year.
You don't need a second, I don't.
Oh, well. You're right, if it's not a.
It's a nomination, you don't need a second, I will accept the nomination. Are there any other nominations? Then I will, well, you don't need to vote on the only. Oh, okay, well, already mucking it up, are you sure?
Cause we sure you want to know. More than one, you can talk, it's not, yes.
Okay. All in favor of.
I know it sounds scary.
Of my nomination for presidency, say aye.
Aye.
All right, now you take over.
New president. We are going to, and the way I'd like to do this is we'll entertain all nominations for a part of decision, and then we're gonna have to vote to see if we do, if you vote again, to see if you do it secret or open, or have we voted to do them all?
I think open, it doesn't seem anything more differentiated.
Okay, all right, so. Are there any nominations for vice president? I will nominate Carla Pennington Cross for vice president. Are there any other nominations? Okay.
I accept the nomination.
Okay, then all in favor of Carla Pennington Cross being our vice president, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, unanimous. Then we will vote for treasurer, are there any nominations for treasurer?
I'd like to have my Ben.
Oh, we don't say.
No, Ben, did you accept a nomination? Okay. Then all in favor of Ben serving as treasurer, voice for aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Ben will be our treasurer, and that leaves our clerk.
I nominate proudly Andy Franklin to serve as our school board clerk.
Andy, did you accept that nomination?
I really don't wanna sign it.
You're good, you're gonna find him.
But for the sake of expediency, I will accept the nomination.
There you go, Anthony, thank you so much. A voice vote, all in favor of Andy's, yes, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? And there we have our slate.
Oh, do you have to do secretary?
Oh. For Karen? Yes, I would like to nominate, I'm so sorry, I would like to nominate. As a secretary. And if no one is opposed to Karen being our secretary, we'll just say aye unanimously, so does anyone oppose? Nope, or yes, that's for our board, and we are a secretary. Actually studying long hours, could not live it out, thank you guys. And we will, motion to recess?
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you, thank everyone.
Thank you, darling. For sticking around.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
I don't know if I'm allowed to say this.
Oh, we just, they're here. Oh, yeah, is there a motion to resume?
Motion to resume.
Great, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Before we take a break, since we do have some awesome guests, visitors you would like to bring up, we'd like to move to the superintendent's report. Or we have to. So, is there a, yep, okay, we're gonna go back, is there a friendly amendment to resume the meeting and move? Five A up to the board recess.
Yes.
Aye.
You know, it's consent, no one's opposed, let's keep it moving to five A. Thanks, Allison.
So there's.
Allow seats for you guys.
Come on in, hi, Brian.
Hi.
Thank you for your patience and for waiting, I'm sorry. Democracy in action.
Go ahead.
So on Saturday, April 22nd, over sixty Glendale scouts and their families came together to plant nine trees at Parkway Elementary School. Most of the scouts that participated in the event are Glendale's middle school or Parkway Elementary School students. You started off the day by learning about the importance of planting, protecting and honoring trees in our community, and then we energies provided some instruction around safe digging, planting and watering. A variety of trees were planted, including autumn blaze maples, red oak, peckberry and Kentucky coffee. Planting the trees was made easy by the generous efforts of the Glendale Department of Public Works, who pre-dug the holes and also provided the mulch. Also, a thank you to Glendale's, Glendale River Hills Custodial Staff who are on hand, helping hauling the trees to various spots. And then after planting the trees and celebrating with donuts and hot chocolate, the scouts were encouraged to name their tree, so fun names like Carl and Pickle were chosen. Carl? Since 2016, Glendale Scouts have planted over twenty trees at Parkway Elementary, so thank you.
Yeah, I, I cannot wait to meet Carl and Pickle, and I am so grateful for the work and the service you guys have given to our district, and I just, I hope you keep giving and. I'm just very grateful for all of you guys, it's really cool, so thank you.
And I would add that I'm always going on about community service for students, because I think it's a really important way to connect and see your value, and I really appreciate that you're doing this, so thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I was also in 393 at one point back in the day, so at Parkway. So I know you guys are doing great things, I'm learning a lot, so.
Yeah, could we take a picture?
Andy's gonna be sorry. Being in a photo with.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you guys.
Good job.
No, that's great, that's great, it's, is there a motion to go into recess? There was a motion, we are going to take a little break to eat and reset our nervous systems and all of this stuff. Ten, ten minutes, we'll, we'll start at seven fifteen. Thank you for your patience.
I'm starving.
Do we have a motion to re-convene?
Second.
Right, um.
I feel like, I feel like we, we already.
If no one is opposed. We are reconvening our meeting, just so you guys know, and our first root of business is visitor participation, I don't know. So, you can, I mean, you know, just.
I know, I should have said, wait.
I know, it's a little, we're all a little, we're.
Karen can't sit up here yet. Ooh, look at all the people.
Hello.
There are people at this meeting.
So. Our first order of business is visitor participation, if there is anybody here. Who would like to speak on a non-agenda item at this time. Please make yourself known. I don't hear any.
And the chairs are all sideways. Feel free to turn your chairs.
Okay, we are going to move on to our, my computer, it's not working, that's fine. We're gonna move on to five B, this is under the superintendent's report, but I'm happy to just. Oh, resolutions, oh, yes, okay. We are asking for to approve three resolutions this month. Carla, myself and Allison have elaborated on these, and I just wanna say, I think the reason that I like to put these resolutions forward is because it's a way to highlight, to honor the diversity of our community, it's a way to show support for our administrators and teachers and staff. leading efforts to make our schoolhouses more welcoming, safe and inclusive through curriculum and culture. The month of May is Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, it's also Mental Health Awareness Month, it's also Jewish American Heritage Month. It's my hope that next year, if these are approved and when we renew these resolutions, that our administrators, teachers, staff, even students, would come and share with us and the community the ways in which their efforts are supporting these resolutions. So it's not just, we're not just, it's not just something we're saying, we wanna see it in action and we wanna hold ourselves accountable, and this is sort of a way to do that and offer our support as support. So, that being said, I haven't retained a motion first, I knew what this president is, give me, everybody have a little grace. Is there a motion to approve? Do you wanna do all three separate, or is there a motion to approve all three resolutions?
I would move to approve all three resolutions.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Audience, anything else?
I would just like to say thank you for making this happen, Danielle. And I, if you go to our school board page, you'll, you'll scroll down and you'll see there's a sort of growing list of resolutions that Danielle has spearheaded, and it's starting to look like a little rainbow garden. It makes me very, very happy. Dear to me is the mental health resolution, I do a lot of advocacy around mental health, so I'm really glad to see all this going on.
There's no further discussion, and if nobody is opposed to passing these resolutions, is anybody opposed? Nope, then we have unanimous, unanimous consent to adopt and support these resolutions as school board, district. And we will move on to item six, B, confirmation of board member policies and goals. Just procedural, like same time that you elect officers and go through all those other pieces, but you'll notice that three of them are updated because there are the new policies that we approved this year. Okay, for board governors, so board member authorities, school board, code of ethics and board officers were the three policies, and they are currently on the website in the 100 series in four decks. Amazing, is there a motion, I'm sorry, I don't, my computer is just. Is there a motion to approve these board governance policies, to approve and affirm?
So moved.
Second, second, any discussion? Then, unless there are any objections, are there any objections? So, by unanimous consent, we will approve these policies. Okay, moving on, determination of board meeting schedule, so Allison has given us her recommendation for dates that we will meet in the summer and beyond, we've had some time to consider those dates and get back to if any of those didn't work. So that being said, is there a motion to approve Allison's recommendation for the board meeting schedule?
So moved.
Second. I guess.
Yes, well, what if, what if we're, what if we're gonna be gone once, I guess that does matter.
If it's just one, we might, we can try to.
Yeah, it's for your wedding, right?
Yeah.
Where are your priorities?
This is the discussion, so congrats, and we will allow it. And.
We will miss.
And I'm just gonna say that if there are no objections, and hearing none, this will pass unanimously. Moving on to determination of depositories, which is also just procedural, is there a motion? Do we need to state anything aloud? What was? No?
This is just about banks.
Okay, is there a motion to?
Motion to approve the listed district depositories for the remainder of.
Second.
Twenty, okay, second, okay, all in favor of voice vote?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Alright, the motion passes unanimously. I would. For determination of delegates and representatives.
Oh, are you?
Yes. Yeah, I would like to ask for a motion to table item six E, so that we can ascertain everybody's preferences and determine delegates and representatives that are in this meeting, second, okay, all in favor of voice vote?
Aye.
Aye, and that will also, so that will be tabled until our next meeting. And on to new business, thank you all for being super patient with us, it's a big night, and we are going to hear what we're gonna have facilities team presentation. Well, we are very excited, we have gone through the process of hiring an architecture firm, owner's rep, construction manager for the first phase of our facility planning. So we are excited to have everybody in the same room. So I will have Mike Ackerman, who is our owner's rep, who will be leading the presentation, we also have PRA, our architecture firm, and Fin Door, our pitch up team, they're all ready to introduce. Just talk about the work that we started and just the highlighting of what.
Sounds great, well, first and foremost, thank you, I know you guys had a busy night tonight, so we'll keep this quick for you, but our hope was really just to do an intro. Intro the team, let you know who you're gonna see and hear from more as we go in the months ahead. Talk a little bit about where we've been, but more importantly, what we're looking forward to in terms of the next steps of this exciting process, and you know, this is, districts don't get to do this every day, right, and, and I believe you guys are very fortunate, pulled together a really talented team of experts that do this every day with districts across the state, and so I think they're really, have shown so far that they're bringing forth their expertise, and we're looking forward to continuing to work with, with everybody as we go forward. So, what we thought we would do is just a quick round of introductions, and the first three or so firms are here, and then I'll introduce the, the remaining groups as well. So my name is Mike Ackerman with Cadence Consulting, I'm a licensed architect, so I spent my whole career in K-12 design, but am acting as an owner's rep. So Cadence Consulting does owner's rep work for school districts across Wisconsin. And with that, spend a lot of time in this early planning phase, so before we're even talking about implementation or any projects, spend a lot of time supporting districts in the strategic planning phases and processes, building the teams, making sure we're kinda going through all the steps at the right rhythm. And I'm looking forward to getting to know all of you as we go forward, so I guess Nick will turn over.
Hey, good evening, everybody, it's great to be back, since some friendly faces, again, here's some conversation, it's always welcome, and it, it's those conversations that help us frame our approach and our work, so us as the architects, we're responsible for the facility assessments as well as the educational adequacy and the development of options, we're gonna go into each one of those as we go through our presentation tonight. But before we turn it over to Fin Door, if I just like to introduce other two members of our team, if you guys want. Yeah, hey, my name's Nick Kent, I'm an architect, educational facility player.
Why is everyone looking at me?
Yeah. Like Mike has said, he spends his career, his career in education, and we do too, this is all that we, we at the PRA and our team do. So it's, it's super exciting for us to, to get involved early and start to really vision with the community, with the, with the staff, with the kids, you know, what, what these facilities can be, what they should do going to the future, so it's, I'm a North Shore resident too, I don't live with district founders, but super, super close.
I'm a birdie.
But Devon lives. Yeah, right, right, right. So it's just a lot of fun, no matter what community we're in, to, to really dig into these, into these incredibly important questions and really start to think about what tools can we provide for, for our kids and our teachers and our communities, for.
Cool, they, they usually keep all the words that I have to say, my job in the process is to cut them off, make sure we keep moving at a good pace.
That's true.
We'll allow the study documents, we're heavily kind of involved in architecture and sustainability world, and that's a lot of my focus. So, our Fin Door partners. Sure, I'll actually have Cole speak first.
Hi, hi, welcome, my name's Nicole Whitman, I'm with Fin Door, I've been in the construction industry for twenty seven years, majority of it being in the K through twelve education department, we're with Fin Door as the construction manager, doing cost estimating, some constructability, and just getting some engagement with communication, which is why Erica is here.
It's out of Erica Freeman, thank you so much for having us here tonight, I'm the education market manager, where I focus all of my time on K-12 schools, since joining Fin Door a couple of years ago, so my background is in public relations and communication, that's really helping this entire team figure out ways to engage our stakeholders and help lead that strategy, and also just as we're talking about facilities, making sure that their voices are at the table, which PRA does a fantastic job at doing, so really happy to be here, your team on the admin side has been wonderful to work with, and I'm sure it's no different for the board, so I'm really happy to be here tonight, so thank you.
So we want to target, also look at the big picture of all the other partners, we may need to go through this process, you've heard a lot about the bricks and mortar from this team, right, in terms of the architects and contractors, but in addition to that, we also want to be sure we have a handle on the population projections going forward. This is a dynamic community, there's a lot of change and development coming in certain pockets of the community. So with that, the district has worked with Applied Populations Lab, which is out of Madison, to do an initial round of population projections, and we have that report in hand, and in process, we have a firm named M.D. Roffers that's doing a second version of that. The Roffers team tends to focus a bit more on development in communities, especially higher density development, and so that's certainly could be a part of what we see more of. So, those are in process, and those become really valuable, because that's what feeds into analysis and capacity studies, and we should be projecting in terms of total kids in, in the schools going forward. Believe it or not, schools, you know, we have limited means towards solving and investing, right, I mean, the realities are that there are only a handful of paths towards investing in our facilities. Focusing on that, an annual budget standpoint, but you also, as we look out, may need to look towards some other solutions as well, and so the district right now is partnered with PNA, which is a partner that's been supporting the district to date, and so they'll continue to do so as we go forward. And then, as Erica noted, and the combination of all three teams here will play a key role in the ongoing communication work associated with this effort, and some of that's gonna be, has already started, as we've engaged with staff and done some survey work, if the board received a survey, we, that doesn't stop here, right, so as we go forward and continue to find ways and opportunities to engage the broader community in this process as well, and you know, we've, this is deemed future facility planning, that, that's very much what we're looking at, is what the future of the schools, what services are they providing and what they wanna look like going forward, so to do that, we would envision bringing on the Donovan group, a name that's probably familiar, but Donovan group has done some internal survey within the district, I believe, to date, and all the teams here working with, yeah, with, with Perry and Joe and their whole team in many, many districts across the state, so if, as to go forward, we would look to them to play a key role as we start looking at needs and start looking at potential solutions to those needs, you may consider a broader survey of the community to be sure we're getting as much feedback as possible. Okay?
Yeah.
Alright. So, one of the first things we are often asked is just from a, a school district standpoint, what roles, what expectations would the consultant team have of the district leadership as well as, as the school board, and so what we thought is we'll, we'll put a handful of these on here, and this will certainly evolve as we go forward. I think we're gonna show you a schedule here and talk a little bit in more detail about different roles as we go through the process going forward. But we do see a handful of things as school board members that we hope to continue to have further dialogues with you about as, as we go forward. One of those, tonight we're gonna introduce some preliminary guiding principles to this process, and we're certainly gonna want some feedback to that as we go forward, and eventually an approval of that. We will continually bring back updates to the board, and be looking for your feedback and approval in terms of next steps, and where we might go as we, we push forward. And then, we have very clearly laid out a series of phases, right, so that we're, we're identifying these, we should look at solutions, and each of these build on one another. But before we move on from one phase to the next, we certainly want the board to be comfortable that we've asked all the right questions and we're positioned to take those next steps, and so, so there'd be a few things that we're gonna look to, to ask the board to do, through this process. We then put together a core planning team, and that's kind of the district leadership team that is providing the day-to-day guidance to the consultant team. We have a structured calendar for the months ahead, that we're gonna be meeting regularly, and we have that group kind of broken into two pieces, the first is a district leadership, that's kind of our core admin team, and then Mike and Kevin with the Buildings and Grounds team are gonna obviously play a really important role. So, what we've done here is put together three preliminary, or excuse me, four preliminary guiding principles to this process, and these are just kind of our, our guidepost moments, right, as we're going along, we're asking tough questions and need to make big decisions, we're gonna try to always filter them back through these guiding principles as much as possible. So, the first one is focus on facilities for all, second was consider current and future educational needs, plan for flexibility and innovation, and listen to the community and for staff input. And those, by design, are meant for us to continue to massage as a group as we go forward. Okay, but we thought, this really allows us to focus on the all, which is, I think, very important to the district, that's made very clear that that's the driving leadership goal. Education is paramount, right, that we have spaces to support that. Flexibility and innovation, right, so the education is evolving very quickly, we wanna make sure we have innovative spaces for students to learn, but to attract and retain the, you know, high quality staff that we have and will want in the future, yet the education, education's gonna keep changing, so we gotta be sure the spaces are flexible and can adapt to support that. And then listening, and that's gonna be a key anchor to much of what we do. So, we just wanted to introduce these to you tonight, we'll, we'll talk more about these as we go forward, certainly would be open for feedback to these, as, as well as if there's anything we think we might be missing as we take our next steps. So from there, we're gonna turn it over to Devon, and Devon's gonna talk a little bit about the initial planning process from the design team.
Excellent, thanks a lot, Mike, and I'm gonna immediately turn it over to Nicole, as she mentioned, she keeps us on track and gets short on words, so let's.
So anyway, this is kind of our starter process, I think this has been shared a little bit before, this is really kind of the big buckets that our process falls into. It's really unique, you can customize it with every district, but wanted to talk a little bit through this and kind of where we are within the process right now. So starting with step one, you'll see up there, facility condition assessment, that's really been the heavy lift these past couple of months here, as we've been walking the facilities with Mike and Kevin, with the rest of the maintenance departments, kind of talking to staff, making sure we're poking into every corner, of really making sure that we've kind of got a grasp on every bit of the facilities, looking at everything from safety and security to really just kind of material wear, diving into each of those issues, we've put together a large list that's still being kind of filtered through and working with Mike and Kevin on how that should really go together, and they've done just a really phenomenal job of maintaining and keeping up what's here, so we're kind of going through that conversation right now of, things might, you know, be in better shape, but what do we kind of wanna project out, make sure that we're planning ahead for all of the maintenance pieces and the years that we would typically see that replacement, pass that list over to our Fin Door team, and they're in the process of working with us to place it right now. So that's kind of what you're seeing up there as step one.
Yeah, then in step two, which happens concurrently with step one, step two focuses on the core reason of we're all here, right, it's for the education aspects and the, the, a few of those guiding principles that we just heard a moment ago from Mike. With step two, we need to understand what type of space we have and ensure that it's the right type of space. Here is where we look at the overall capacity of the buildings, how many students could we support within each of our facilities? What does that mean when we get the APL as well as the Roffers demographic study, what does that mean for us as we look to the future? And then, that is all rooted in the conversations that we've had with building, the leadership with the leadership team, as well as when we were able to sit in our open house style engagement with staff, which was, which was great, we got a lot of feedback, that, that good support, comments through that. As well as when we were able to sit in our open house style, engagement with staff, which was, which was great. We got a lot of feedback, good support comments through that process. So again, understanding, do we have space and truly is it the right type of space to best support teaching and learning? Just today, but moving forward to the future. So before we pivot to step three, it's kind of an important point to, to look back. Steps one and two are really exploring current state. They're starting to explore what we have, what are some of the challenges? But also what is working while we're trying to capture the good as well as the challenges within these buildings. Essentially, they're trying to frame what questions are out there that people need to start to try to find answers to. And that's really what step three is. So I like to say step three is really where it starts getting fun, you know? Steps one and two are kind of like, yeah, okay, we kind of know this. We got maintenance, we got capacity, all these things are important. We're framing the questions, but step three, this is where we start to explore the what ifs, you know? What if we change this? What is the best organization for teaching and learning? How do we create spaces that engage, inspire, meet the needs of every student, every community member that interacts with these buildings? So in step three, we're, we're going to be exploring a wide range of options. That's really important that we explore a wide range. Everything from ten, one end of the spectrum, like, you know what? We're, we're pretty happy with how our buildings are. We just need a list of things we have to fix. That's kind of your one end of the spectrum, all the way to. Maybe it's time for a building to be retired and something else be built in this place. It's kind of the opposite end of that spectrum. Usually the right answer is somewhere between. So as we go, as we go through this process, it's going to be critical for us all to be listening very carefully. To be collecting input from the various important stakeholders in this process. And let that information influence and inform the, the options and the concepts that we're developing. It's step three, along with looking at the real ramifications of, of cost and schedule. And if you change things and you build things, how do you do that in a way that minimize disruption to teaching and learning and our neighborhoods that are buildings? So that's a, that's a big team effort to go through, go through step three.
And to add to that, you know, we know the district's embarking on a strategic planning effort and we know that this plays a key role in that. Like everything Nick just outlined, really is done in a master plan mindset, right? Fully acknowledging that we may not be in a position to get everything done all at once, but we want to be sure whatever potentially does happen coming out of this. Is a first step towards that, that long-term vision.
So throughout this whole process, always we want to be sure that we're touching base with, obviously everyone else, you will also with the community. So you staff, students, but larger community that may have really no direct involvement with the school district right now. So you don't see it up there because the idea is that it is throughout, it's kind of coded throughout. But four would be our kind of formal pivot to go and ask the community, what do you think about what we're talking about? So survey, part of that would be an actual survey. So. There to who we do it by is going to a formal survey that's targeted, it's all mailboxes and we get back data graphs. But also a series of kind of community conversations that we'd like to look at towards the end of the year. And really just having those kind of dedicated touchpoints to be able to. Hear what we can from the community.
So here on this slide, we try to extrapolate those four steps into a calendar period. So in the gray vertical bars, that represents the summer months, right? We're about to get into some, it's a great fun, I guess. So. Number one, step one is seek. So that's been ongoing from, from March through May. Then step two, as I mentioned, that's concurrent with one study. That's the yellow bar, again, progressing through to May. And then you see a very large chunk of time for concept development. As Nick mentioned, that's where we're going to be getting some feedback. And then Nicole brought us home with the formal kind of idea of a survey. And then I'm going to turn it over to, to Mike for the next slide and he'll show you how this layers into each one of our roles and how we can support the overall process.
Yeah. And so actually, just to queue us up. So you can see that this really. Is building towards spring, spring of the next year. So essentially what you're seeing is a lot of work that'll be going on through the summer and through most of the next school year. And that work is going to, as Devin noted, be done internally, a lot of work just with leadership and internal dialogues. It's going to be done with staff getting feedback. It's going to also look at ways of engaging the community. And so what we've done, and you know, Mike, flip into the next slide, is broken that into kind of these three rows. And we thought a nice way to start to break that up would be to think about what. Over the course of the next two summers, summer and a half, plus the next school year. What really will the district leadership team be focused on? Similarly, what will the school board be focused on? And then finally, in terms of staff and in community, how were they layered to this as well? So what you're seeing, and as you get a chance to look at this more closely and dive into this in, in more detail. We intend, and I guess from a focus on the school board role here first and foremost, to be in regular correspondence with you. And I think the, the vision is that we have kind of a standing update of some sort and if you have a weekly update that goes out. We'll continue to support that. We'll be in presenting this summer. We're really excited to start to tour the buildings as well. And so we're looking forward to providing updates and walking those buildings with you, just so we all have kind of the same perspective as we start diving deeper. In the fall and then right after the holidays, we're envisioning two rounds of community engagement sessions. Where we're actually do, can envision more like an open house session. We're going to invite the community in to participate in a process to provide feedback to shape and, you know, kind of help. Get our arms around not just validating the needs as the community season, but also what's the future might look like. So we have a couple of opportunities to do that and we hope the board will play a role in that as well as we go forward. And then as we look into where we've been and as we look forward. We have a, an ongoing communications and engagement effort. It's just kind of buckets, all the efforts that go into the ongoing updates and how we make sure folks are informed about what is going on with this process. And how they can have a voice in this. So the team did some staff open house and surveys this past month. Have a chance to go sit in each of the schools. Got a lot of good feedback as, as Devin noted earlier. And then as we look forward, we had noted the board survey that is out currently. We in May here will have a future facility planning update in the district newsletter. And then June, July and August, we're planned to align with rotating school board meetings at different sites. And here at Glen Hills at Parkway and then at Good Hope. And the thought there, just so you know what to expect, is that the PRA team would provide a facility needs summary to you for that particular building. And then answer any questions you have. And at the end of your meeting, we'll take a tour of that building together.
So if I can just interject at that meeting, that's when we'll be presenting step one and step two for that specific building. And then at Good Hope, we'll kind of do a wrap up and bring it all together.
And those will be open to the public. Slutter too, just as a like heads up for families who really have, I just want to keep saying it. Those will be open to the public.
And then we're, we're just all going to troop around like the peanuts. Is that the idea that we'd actually box the facilities?
Absolutely. Yeah.
I think it's also important to note that Kevin might also be there.
Yeah.
So then November and January, we'll have the community conversations around shaping the vision and then culminate that engagement effort in the spring with a community-wide survey. So macro level, that's what we have sketched out right now. And there's more to this as we get further into it. We're looking forward to providing these updates as we go.
So for questions, we typically go to our audience first, just to see if our audience has any questions they'd like to ask our presenters. Our audience is most of our equity committee. But it's a nice design. It's truly an awesome group. If there are none, then do we have any questions on the board? When we start with Carla and then Ben and myself, if you have any.
Sure. I, I don't know if my question needs to be answered right now, but I, I'm sitting here wondering. What the product is that we're taking out to survey people on at the end of shape. Right? I'm thinking about my experience with Nicoli High School. I remember getting just like these, this memory of like survey after survey, what things matter the most to you monthly. And then just kind of waiting for when a design was going to be presented and then like finding out that like 90% of the design was, you know, Tupperware surfaces on. I don't know, you know, it was just, it was just really long. And so I'm curious what you, what is it? What do you call it? That, that false surface for athletics?
I, I think.
Fake grass.
I think the pandemic pushed their timeline a little bit.
So I'm, that's what I'm sitting here wondering, like, what does the end of shape look like? Like, what are you going out to community and asking about? Are you envisioning like a range of options of what we could do? Or are you envisioning a final proposal?
It somewhat depends on where our conversation goes and how it evolves with, with the community. So in, in an ideal world, we, we start getting a real sense of consensus within the community, like things are really pointing towards a solution. That I will say that, that is most often not the case, that we're actually, we have, you know, one or two things, maybe three things that are kind of. Seem like they're viable, long-range. As Mike pointed out, we're, we're really looking at a long-range master plan. So we could be in a situation where we'll say on the one hand, we might have. A very clear-cut set of proposals. The community is kind of giving us that feedback and we say, we are proposing to do this, this, this and this. This is the dollar cost for that investment and this is what a tax impact would be per usually for a hundred thousand dollars. We may find ourselves testing, this might be what you saw, you saw the survey. This might be what you saw, particularly that there might be somewhat of a menu of things, like the community gave us a whole list of things that they are interested in. And each one of those things might have its own price, price point to it. So a survey then would likely be looking at helping us prioritize which ones we want to do now. And surveying what that tax collapse would be, to kind of put together a package that would garner the broadest support.
Do you have any questions?
Not right now, no.
I, I don't really either. So like Carla, future thinking, the questions that came into my head that don't need an answer right now are around like. What does a successful community conversation look like to you guys in this district? And. Just probably looking for recommendations around advertising these like, you know, just, so just thinking about how do we really get that meaningful engagement? That's super important to us. And it sounds like you guys are doing a good job already, but those community conversations, I think will be really important to make sure we get that right. So thank you. This was a really awesome presentation.
I just have one comment.
Yeah.
We talked a lot about that core planning team. At the same time, we have a communications team that is focused on exactly what you're talking about. How can we achieve success with those conversations? What does success look like? How are we going to promote, advertise and bring people in and with them where they need to be met? So that team is also talking about all of that right now. We're not waiting until we get through any of that option development. So that planning is already about.
Yeah. I love that meeting us, meeting them where they're at. I think we find, we have such a diverse community, very bold community that. You find us at our, our school events, right? That's very nice. The most, right? And those are good places to build relationships and talk to people. So I just, I came up with that. So thank you.
Uh, thank you. Thank you.
I, I think. We just had met with all of them and they've been very patient with all of our questions.
Every single detail, like even the slideshow, like how many conversations we had around you. I think they might want to know that. Nail them. So we wanted to.
Well, I appreciate every one of you giving up every evening to.
And bringing co-teams. You're setting the bar high. So thank you.
And if you feel like it, stick around for equity committee conversations, because this is kind of the beating heart of what a lot of us think about when we think about facilities. We're going to be talking about some interesting stuff.
It will be extremely long, I promise. Actually, we have one, one fairly brief topic I hope to talk about, strategic planning recommendation. Allison has made a recommendation to work with Josh Schrader for a strategic planning work this fall. We've had the proposals. We've had opportunity to engage with her on them. So I would like to ask if there is a motion to approve her recommendations to hire Josh Schrader of JSC Consulting to complete our strategic planning work in September. Awesome. Third second, I will second. Can I do that? I can do that. Yeah. Thank you. So, okay. And now a discussion. Okay. We, we understand each other. It's okay. All right. So any discussion, any questions, Carla? Okay, Ben?
Yeah, I was looking at the cost and. Like I was saying in the last week, strategic planning, like you and I were both in the degree program that read about this. We both know how to do it. I don't think we need to spend this much money on someone to help us with strategic planning. I think it's better utilized elsewhere. I'm more than willing to help. I'll do it for free. But I, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate to spend this much money on a strategic planner.
So my pushback would be is that just like this team has expertise, people come support this strategic planning, also have expertise. And we didn't try to go through this process last year. It was kind of stalled. And so I think we do need the support to get through the process. And again, it's a front end. It's not a continuation, because then we have a three to five year plan. Which then we would be adjusting, adapting, continuing.
Well, the thing is you also have expertise and now this isn't your first year, you know? And so I think it's going to go a lot better. I, I just, I don't think it's appropriate to spend this much money on a strategic planner.
Any other discussion or?
I guess I would just say I, I hear you, but I feel like we are starting from the ground up. Having a third-party consultant to get us started on strategic planning. Agree, I'm concerned about cost, but. I don't know what the alternative is to get that step pushed through the door.
So the idea behind strategic planning, it's. Pretty simple. You know, we come together, we make our pillars for the community and then we. Develop goals to make sure we're, we're following that commitment. I mean. It is something I think we can do as a board at the council. You can do it as well. I think it shakes the capacity to do it. I do think it's problematic of many school districts around the state than hire consultants. It's just a lot of money and we know that the biggest, the highest impact in a school are the teachers. And so we're spending a lot of money on consultants. I think this is something that we can do together without one.
Okay. She, I appreciate the comments, the responses. We have a motion and if we are done with discussion, we can have a vote and we can do a roll call vote for this one. So Carla Pennington Cross. I. Ben went?
No.
Danielle Bailey votes aye. Motion passes two to one. And we will move on to our equity committee update.
Thank you.
Thank you for your prayers.
Thank you.
First of all, we did not bring cupcakes.
Plenty and they have, we'll share.
But we do have a presentation there.
Pull it up for us.
Thank you all for being patient. Stayed so late. It's late, relatively.
Just about to count.
It's almost early.
A lot of us.
Amazing. Pointed to CPR and so while you are presenting to two of your committee members and Ben, you're also, you're also presenting to Karen as well. So. Not for nothing.
I think we can probably start introducing ourselves as we wait, because that's essentially the first two sides. So we are all members of the equity committee. And so we went in reverse alphabetical, but I'm going to start and we'll just go this way until the slides come up. My name is Javier Aladiz, pronouncing him his. I am a parent of currently one student in the district.
Hi, I'm Amy. It's Julian. I'm pronounced sugar. I have a teacher here at Glen Hills. So. I have a teacher here at one of those, so free to learn.
Hi, I'm Jenny Dos, uh, chair. And I have the three children, I have to think how many are actually in this district, three children and a sister.
Katie Avalos, I have two children, so in this district, she her. Davis, little social worker for the district and my pronouncer she her. Kelly Steiner, um, in this context, I'm a parent of two Glen Hills students and my pronouncer she your name.
Taylor Dassel, I'm the assistant to the director of teaching and learning for the district as well as the district liaison for this committee.
I'm Ronnie, Christian Lieutenant of Florida District.
I have your slideshow here.
Do you all?
Julie.
I can use my, just use my phone if you all have it, but obviously other folks can't see it.
Yeah, it is. It's in public now. I, I've got purpose of our presentation slide.
Okay. So, uh, since we just introduced ourselves, we'll go to that slide and if, if it pops up. You're right there? Okay.
Sorry, it was a can bot to download back to Google Doc situation. Because we couldn't take the download of her chat. So I apologize.
I've got it open in power.
Oh, sorry.
And then I think we're on slide three right now. All right, thank you. So the purpose of our presentation today is to provide you all with the information and background necessary to approve and adopt our two proposed documents, which I believe you also have in front of you, the district equity non-negotiables and the district equity lens. So first, a definition for educational equity is the intentional allocation of resources, instruction and opportunities according to need, requiring that discriminatory practices, prejudices and beliefs be identified and eradicated.
That was like a.
A good definition. Approval.
Yeah.
All right. So, um, this slide is to help highlight the difference between equality and equity. Equality is, is generic, group focused and equal. While equity is adaptable, individual focused and fair. Our quote here from Paula Dressel with the Race Matters Institute, the route to achieving equity will not be accomplished treating equally will be achieved by treating everyone justly according to their circumstances. There is a luminous data, um, showing that equity work benefits all students. Next slide. So a little bit about the process. The, our committee has met monthly for seven times so far this school year. We also gathered input from school staff at both, at both schools, met with administrators, did outreach at family engagement night and offered virtuals and feedback sessions to families and the community. Okay.
So we came up with the two documents. The first one is the district equity non-negotiables. So there are one, two, three, four, five topics. The first one, we accept each other. Our community is uniquely diverse. Each person's identity and worldview is unique and valuable. We try to seek out and understand those who are different from us. Number two, we are responsible to each other. We seek out and identify inequities and social injustice when we see them. We take action to eliminate inequities and social injustices in our schools. We explore our own identities and biases. We, we teach each other. We create authentic educational teams that include teachers, staff, families and students. We support all learners with a culturally responsive curriculum that honors identities of our diverse student body. We build a culturally responsive classrooms and learning environments that honor the identities of our diverse student body. Number four, we listen to each other. Students, staff and family voices matter. We share power. We create safe and brave spaces for all voices. We grow with each other. We take risks and show courage in addressing inequities. We expect challenges, discomfort and failures. We learn and we keep trying.
So that's the first document today. And I'm just noticing too, the, uh, the formatting on here is displaying a little funny. So it's, uh, it shows up better on the printed out.
And our second document was the district equity lens. Objective, our commitment to equity supports fostering a welcoming, inclusive and barrier free environment of urgency, accountability and compassion. Educational equity is achieved by acknowledging that systematic institutional policies and practices can act as barriers to success. Examining, interrupting and removing barriers will create conditions that lead to access and opportunity for every student. This equity lens is designed to ensure decisions are made in keeping with the district equity non-negotiables. When making decisions and taking action, we utilize the following questions. Number one, who are the groups affected by this policy, program, practice or decision? What are the potential impacts on these group? Two, does this policy, programs, practice or decision have unintended consequences such as ignoring or worsening existing disparities? Three, how have we intentionally involved the people who are impacted by this policy, program, practice or decision? Four, what information slash data are we basing our decision or action upon? Five, how will the, the impact or outcome be measured? Six, is a decision slash outcome sustainable? And then below, we just have the definition of education.
Which is the same one that we read earlier.
Yes.
So our recommendations today are for the board to approve and adopt the district equity non-negotiables and the district equity, equity lens, uh, as well as for the administration to conduct an equity audit for the district. And we will open up for questions, uh, of which any of.
Yes, we can start with the audience if there are any questions from members who are not.
Do we want to have a motion first?
Oh, yeah. Yes, apologies. I'm getting. Is there a motion to approve the equity lens and the equity non-negotiables as recommended by the equity committee?
Am I allowed to make that motion as a member of the equity?
I mean, well, if you can't, we can't do it.
I know. Yes. So I, I move for the, for the adoption of these documents.
And I will second. And now we are open for discussion. So if there's anything from the audience. Fabulous chat. That will take it. That's good. And then discussion of the board. So obviously Ben, Carl and I are on the equity committee. If, I don't know, if there's anything you want to add to, you know, about your thoughts on these that might help you. And or, yeah, would you like, yeah, or you could go first. If you have questions.
I have, I don't have any questions.
Oh, okay.
I was just going to say that I really appreciate that we have the opportunity to meet with you guys as a team. And I love, like, the action, like, that you changed the language. So it's action, you know, so I just appreciate that. I like that, that change.
Yeah. Uh, okay. Yeah. I don't know everybody. Oh. Oh, we did. We did introductions, but I was actually going to say that beyond, beyond these amazing people being parents and teachers in the district. When we first got together, we were elated to just learn that the expertise among these people and the passions and the backgrounds of, you know, all of that were, it's, were so aligned with what we were talking about. So I wouldn't mind, you know, I mean, if it. Oh, that's right. That's right. But there, there just really is a vast wealth of knowledge and background and I don't, I mean. No, I think it's worth stating publicly, like, what you guys, like, do and are passionate about, you know, or if you want, I don't know.
Slide, if it's, just on a record, slide two has all of our names too.
But it's more than your names. I'm saying, okay, that's fine. I'll, I'll brag on all of them later. But it was really a privilege to be able to learn and work with people who have such vast experience and knowledge and passion for this work. So that was, it was just really great. And I'm very proud of the work we've done and the way about, that we went about doing it collaboratively and seeking engagement and feedback. So.
And we will continue to do.
And that we will come back to you and ask you to renew us to do again next year in a different way. And now, you know, if these are approved, I'm excited to hand them over to our administration and find out how we can support, you know, you guys implementing these and utilizing them. Because we see these as our found, as foundational equity documents for our district, as our commitments in this district. As something that will hopefully empower and support our communities, our families, our staff, our students, our administration, our teachers to do the work, you know, to, to go out there and do the work and not be afraid that we don't have your backs. Because everybody has your back. There is so much buy-in for this work. So now, hopefully, it gets to go forth and make it, you know, and keep making, keep, if it passes, keep making it the dream. So.
Can I just say?
Yeah.
So super tight voices have it. So in addition to the feedback opportunities that were listed, I know Lolita worked everything that anyone moved slowly here for a good long while. And she approached me at three different events. Now I'll come to that.
Relentless.
And I'm on the committee. And then as a committee, we met with all of that feedback and tried to hear what teachers were saying. Well, they talked to student groups, including the LGBT student group, the Black Student Union, a place for, a place for age. Like, all of the student groups that might, the student, student council, well, clearly about that connection. All the student groups that might have some input and teachers with input and then community members. Um, and so then we tried to hear all of those things in our drafting of this language so that it would be coming to you all with as many voices included as possible.
Yeah. Oh, got a couple. Yeah.
Okay, I have two points I would like to make real quick. First, I heard you mentioned the, that in the future, there's going to be a recommendation to renew our committee. Is that the next school?
We're looking for the June, the summer, June school.
The June school meeting? Okay, that was my question.
We have one more equity committee meeting this month, next week.
Yep, next week.
Where we can, we will sort of formalize that recommendation about the work we'd like to do next year and to ask, and, you know, a couple that were asking if we were good.
Um, my only second point, and I don't know if this is the appropriate moment for this. Um, being named the equity liaison for this committee, I just want you all to know that while this is a new committee, this was my first time in this, I would love to be a bridge to connect our school board, our committee and our meta-extraction to make sure we're on the same page. And I just, I just, I'm willing and able to be as involved as any could possibly be. I really think this is important work and that I have that unique position as being able to distribute to staff person and a committee member. Just know that I hope that we need to continue to get this work together.
I appreciate it. We have pretty strong communication. So it's not like anything that was lacking. They just really keep me. So we talked, you know, all the time. So. Absolutely.
Yeah, I did not have a question, but as somebody that works really closely with our students receiving special education services and serve by our student services team, I appreciate this work. I appreciate the language. I feel like language is so important and I know this team toiled over every noun, every verb, every adjective. Because language really is powerful, but I really do believe that this helps define our work in the district. And I think it's really important for all educators that come here or interview here to understand this is the work. This is the work. This is the work of public education and this is the work. Well done.
I think I just, I just want to add to appreciation of that and, and of our work that, you know, I, I think a lot of times documents like these get, you know, posted on a website or included in a binder somewhere and never really look, get, look at or referenced again. Um, and I think our intention is for the opposite of that. There needs to be tools that are leveraged and used by everyone who is a stakeholder and inhabits these schools, uh, from the students all the way up to, you know, everybody with a position of authority throughout the structures of the school. So that's the whole of the intention. That's, that's on you all.
And we looked at that list of questions. One of the things we were hoping it would provide is that as a board member, even if it was your first at the school. For example, it like lists questions that are important. And so we're hoping it makes it easier for you all to ask the critical questions and to have people know ahead of time. You should come talk to us without being prepared to answer these critical questions in a way that helps to make sure that all of the work that we're doing aligns to the same purpose of everyone having an equitable opportunity, but amazing energy. I'm all looking at you because I.
We're, we just think architect, obviously, but, you know, I think we talk master plan, we talk about what these buildings, like, the spaces need to reinforce the culture, right? And the spaces need to reflect who we are as well as, you know, power, grace of be open to all the things you're talking about. So, you know, we're, we took these and these are going to go back to the team. Just to be sure, as we're talking about how the spaces look and how they function and how they support special ed and how you, that, this whole.
I was thinking that during your presentation. You had to check off, you took the.
It's true, true.
Yeah. So I just want to add that I wish we could record it every week. Because I felt like our meeting is embodied exactly what we dreamed of, right? They were, they were inclusive, they were open, they were passionate. We had a lot of disagreement and none of it got our clip. It was just amazing watching you guys, each of you an expert, each of your participant, just go through that process. Neither of these documents ended up looking like anything that I envisioned when we started. And I just love them. I just love that they reflect each of your input and the, you know, not just as representatives of whatever your identities are, but it just as individuals. And for me, it's just like a, I wish I could just bottle that and just, you know, put it in a fire hose and shoot it out of. You know, and I, I think, and I want to say, you know, what I worry about is that, I know, I'm a student. We've been talking about militaristic language that shows up everywhere in my speech. But, you know, I think some people will look at these documents and say, what does this have to do with education? Right? But this has as much to do with education, learning math and science and whatever, as teaching a three-year-old how to hold a pencil. It's just a skill. It's a baseline skill, learning how to walk, right? For me, these are baseline values and skills that are going to support strong achievement across the board for people with different abilities and talents and identities. And so for me, this is just so foundational. I'm just really grateful to you guys for meeting in and the time.
That people doubted that we would, that committees can get things accomplished. You're the only one. And, um, yeah, so we, we did it. Um, and now I will, it's there. Well, in our, yeah, a voice vote, all in favor of passing these two resolutions, please say aye. Aye. None appearing that oppose by unanimous, well, three oh. These, uh, these documents are now adopted in our district. Oh, there's more, right? Oh, my God.
Motion to adjourn.
You guys are, yeah, this is, you, you may go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for taking. Take a cupcake. Yeah. These are the best. These are the best. This is a celebration. Although Carla was a vegan once up here, she's going to make us. He's vegan. Oh, my God. Thank you. It was such a good slideshow. Okay, we just have a little bit of business to keep that up. We have a convention in that.
Okay, we just have a little bit of business to keep that. We have a consent agenda. The consent agenda contains nominal contracts for teachers for the 2024 school year. It contains a contract for CISA services for a 2024 school year. It contains the director of building and grounds proposal to keep Lindsay in that position under the terms of last year's agreement. It involves some personnel changes, purchase of a new carpet cleaner. It's a fun stuff, okay, some stuff, approval financials. It is expensive. An approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve a consent agenda?
I think we need to take out a, go in a closed session for that. So we can talk about it. It is.
Talked about it last time.
Yes, is there more? Is there something we didn't talk about already?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda after pulling out a, and then move into a closed session to talk about a.
So you wanna make a motion to approve the consent agenda, pulling out a?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second, just so we can have a discussion. What, is there something new?
Well, I would have to set a closed session, but.
Normally, if someone wants to pull something.
I don't think, I don't, yeah, do, you have to. I think you have to. So can we talk, you can't, okay. Okay, right? I mean, I think that's, I think that's correct. I do, yeah, I do believe that's correct. You just need one person to want, want to, want to pull something for the consent agenda. So can we do this? Can we approve the consent agenda minus eight A?
So I would make that motion.
Okay, and well, I'll second, and all in favor of both, aye.
Aye.
Hearing that opposed, consent agenda's passed except for eight A. Can we hold that piece? Can we end your future agenda topic so that we could sort of?
So that visitors.
Yeah, so if there, okay, so we will just jump to nine A. Does anybody have any future agenda topics? I do not. Do you, Ben?
No.
Okay, so that will, okay, which means we need a motion to move into a closed session to discuss non-ruin.
We did, that's their, uh, this is their.
We did at the start. Yeah, yeah, it's at the beginning. Is there a motion to move into?
So.
Okay, sorry. Like, we don't have to, it's an executive session and it's not. It's not noticed. Okay, I'm saying like, can we?
I don't know if you could go into closed sessions.
Karen, where was your?
I know, I was looking.
Where, I don't have my. I don't think, I.
Robert's rules.
Yeah, I'm not, I have Robert's rules. I'm actually not sure that he's.
Usually we have to notice closed session.
So does that mean, how, how time sensitive is this? How, how long do we have to take care of this, to, to talk about this? Unless Ben wants to retract his. I guess my only thing is, we have talked about this in closed session. Did something new arise from the last time we talked about it until now?
What?
You just, just yes or no?
I mean, yes.
Something new has arisen.
I, if I, unless I misremember, yes.
And it's not something you could just say in general terms.
No.
So I would need to look at Robert's rules to know if we can go into closed session about it. We have to notice.
Can I give a reason? Like a reason for all of these?
Sure.
Not having an license after June 30th. And our lawyer said we're not allowed to. Yes, track to teach and not have a license after June 30th.
So is it on DPI that they're still looking at licenses from this year?
Yes, and.
But legal said we cannot offer them a contract until.
So what I wanna know is the plan for the summer.
So if they get their fix in order, then we offer them the project.
And they all know that, and they, all the circumstances have been discussed and communicated, and they're aware of all of the.
But, um, you know, can
Okay.
Is, is. Yes. Well, okay, but we're actually getting to the information I want. What are you gonna do in the weekend?
Nothing at this point, yeah. Nothing, because every single person has given us specific timeline, expectation, odds, and dates, and so we're just kind of.
So there's, there's a deadline. And or they've given you a timeline.
When they anticipate that it'll be.
And you're gonna, it's gonna be, so nothing's gonna get posted. It's gonna be, and that, that's the date they gave you, you've accepted it, and then after that, okay, you know, now it posts it.
We just.
Got it.
Yeah. Which we did discuss. Yeah, we talked each one about that. Our last closed session. I mean, it could.
I understand the concern. They give us timelines. We kind of have an idea of when it'll be set and then.
I think they're trying to. We're not. Not, not now, but I would be like, if I get.
Right.
If it's like. We don't want to.
I'm assuming, I, okay. Yeah, I could ask you separately. That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah.
But I didn't know, I could.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking, in general terms.
Yeah.
Nobody's gonna enter posted.
Yeah, is there a motion to approve the non-ruin contracts for teachers for the 2023, 2024 school year?
There's so much.
Second.
All in favor of a voice vote? Aye. Hearing that opposed. And now, motion to. Hearing, that is a second.
Second.
Hearing that opposed. Did we actually finish?
I think we did it.